All right, let's get started. Welcome, everyone. This is our second special study session to review the City of Holland 2022 fiscal year budget. We met last evening, did a regular meeting, did a special session, and we're going to cover the last half of the different departments this evening. And I'm going to look out in the audience, first thing we'll do is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And I'm going to turn it right over to our city manager Keith Van Beek. Mr. Van Beek.
And because last night, apparently, I use a lot of words, I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Koster, who is going to do the presentation for our Holland Board of Public Works.
Wonderful, thank you.
Oh, good.
Evening, Dave.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. It's nice to be with you this evening. And good to start kicking off the second night here of your budget review with, I think, some pretty exciting things on our plate here for the next year. And we always develop our budget, as the city does as well, within the context of a five-year plan. And so we're going to walk through the four utilities and tell you a little bit about some of the highlights and efforts that are going on, and some pretty exciting news, as well as relates to some of the rates within electric. But we'll go ahead and just get started here with some overarching themes here for the budget. First of all, I think it's important to note that the Board of Public Works does set a strategic plan, identifying the critical issues facing the utility areas and the priorities over a five-to-ten-year period of time, and we work away at that. And some of the things that are represented here, such as being regional, you know, being more regional in our outreach to try to gain some efficiencies, we have some things that are going on that really represent that. Our water service, retail extension to Park Township and taking that over this last year. We've had one year of, beginning coming up on one year of operation with the entirety of the North Side area for Park Township under that retail water agreement. Our digester at our water reclamation facility, the water reclamation facility itself is a regional entity that serves the surrounding townships in addition to the City of Holland. And of course, the support of a transfer to the City of Holland that we've been able to do and continue to improve with Holland Energy Park. We have some wholesale sales, capacity and energy sales, where some additional monies have come over for not only things like the municipal capital improvement fund, but also some set aside for regional initiatives. And so that's an important part of that. We work to be an employer of choice, making sure that our wage adjustments are in good shape, professional development is in place. And we're also working with the city on the GARE program at Ottawa County, but also internally with our own diversity, equity, inclusion, maturity model, as we like to call it, and a journey that we're really starting to move the needle on all of our practices and procedures inside of our organization there, again, with that assistance of the city. Reliability is the number-one attribute that our customers say they're looking for in their utilities. So we have an asset risk-based program of looking at our capital replenishment, our infrastructure replenishment. We are proactively replacing underground cables that were put in pre-1990 over the five-year period of time here. So you see a lot of that activity under a planned basis. We're renewing our lift stations on our water, on our wastewater system to ensure reliability there. And again, working very closely, again, with the City of Holland and Transportation Department and Brian White, we have projects to target water and wastewater line replacement, as well as rehabilitation of our wastewater lines through lining, which has been a very effective process for us. And then the area of sustainability, a lot of really important activities here. You'll see increased investment in our energy waste reduction program for electric. We had been doing a 1% per year target savings for all customer classes since 2008, and we are upping the ante on that. We are, we are outside, becoming outside of the mandate from the state of Michigan, so we have some freedom to design our own program. And this year, we are moving under consultant help to design a plan to one-and-a-half percent, which then, over the next couple of years, builds to a 2% per year savings. And I'll point that out under the five-year for the expenditures, you'll see how that falls in. We are increasing our own renewable energy in our portfolio. We are taking in solar energy, as two big solar farms in the state of Michigan are coming online. We have 13 megawatts of those. We are actively looking at two additional projects in the state of Michigan that we'll be looking at bringing in front of the board and council here fairly soon. But they probably will not be online until late 2022 or '23 timeframe. But again, these are incrementally rolling in to our portfolio to increase our renewables. And then finally, for our own operations, we are taking on our own elective renewable energy rate for our service center and our other facilities that use electricity, just as the city has done with its facilities, and we are promoting it to our customers. And as, at the end of the electric, you'll hear a little bit about how people can do that without actually seeing an increase in their bill after July 1. So, moving into significant influencers, wages are up about three, just under three-and-a-half percent, but that is the product of two additional full-time equivalents. We are looking at a coordinator position in our broadband department to help growth. Right now, our engineers are really doing a lot of customer interfacing, and that keeps them from the design of the new project extensions. So there's a real opportunity here to have a return on that position. And then also, in our electric distribution area, we've seen tremendous new build, not just in the City of Holland, but we also serve the surrounding townships. And up on Quincy, there's a very large housing development there, but there's also apartments going in on 16th Street and a lot of industrial growth as well, which is really interesting during the pandemic to see that, but we've seen just a tremendous amount of that. And so we have a planner that's going to help us with that aspect forecasted or in our electric distribution area. Overall, our structure adjustments are between two-and-a-half and two-and-three-quarter percent, and then we'll have some wage growth offset by turnover that we'll see in certain positions. Overall, we're sitting pretty well. We do market survey analyses, and we're about 99% of the market median right now. But we do continue to see pressure in our trade skills. Those linemen, system operation technicians, instrument technicians, very high-skilled positions are seeing considerable pressure on wages.
Sure.
I had a question on the radio today about city wages and things like that. You are comparing that against not only other municipalities, but you're also looking at the private side.
Yes, we do, yeah. When I say the private, you're talking about investor-owned utilities, for example, and other industrial facilities, yes. Absolutely. Yeah, because, you know, right now, our benefits are very portable. They don't have to relocate, and so we have to be competitive not only with other municipals, but also with the investor-owned utilities on that. So we do work very hard to make sure that we are. If you look at the pie chart here, it shows some significant changes, really to point out. The orange bar is the huge issue here. Interest on bonds is dropping significantly because we are, as the, as the council knows, we are paying off a significant portion of the debt that was issued for Holland Energy Park. Under the yellow section, all the other expenses include an unusual expense, and that is for the demolition of the James DeYoung plant. And I'll get into more detail on the next slide here. So these are significant changes from the budget to what we're forecasting this year. And again, that top negative one that you see there is really that reduction in the interest on bonds, about seven, a little over $7 million. But then the extraordinary item at the bottom that kind of offsets a lot of that, but it's a one-year, one-time thing, is the James DeYoung demolition. And that is an estimate that we have net of salvage value at this point. And so fuel and purchased power is up, partly due to some of the renewables coming in. Also, we have some significant capital needs at the Bell River facility, which is not operated by us, but is operated by Detroit Edison, and we have to support that plant until the retirement date of that plant later this decade. Maintenance supplies and services are up slightly, and that has to do with the program that we put in place to do turbine maintenance. And that's kind of a prepayment process, so that when the major overhauls come, we've already paid for them in advance. And so that's something that the board took on this last year.
Dave, I hate to interrupt you, but I think Scott's got a question.
Yes, sir.
So didn't we have reserves for the decommission of the plant?
We have cash set aside, so it's not a, it's not something that's unexpected, but we have to show it on our income statement as an expense. So it shows up as a budget expense, but yes, we have reserves set aside for it. So it's not going to be, it's not a rate-driving thing. It's not going to drive an increase in rates or anything like that. Matter of fact, that's one of the reasons why, even though our budget is fairly flat, we're actually offering a rate decrease in electric, is because we already had that cash set aside for the decommissioning, yes. But from accounting standards, we have to show that. Yep. And then the contribution to the city is up primarily due to the increase in the wholesale sales that we've had. We had some significant capacity sales for the excess power that we had, and that brought in some, some revenue that we share on a 50/50 net, and the net income impacts are shared 50/50 between the BPW and the city. Other ones on there are relatively minor to show, we'll get into that in more of the detail when we get to the specific utilities. Just to remind everybody a little bit about how we set rates for electric, there are some tests that we do to ensure that overall, we have sufficient revenue to really do three things. If we have debt outstanding, those debt issues have covenants, that we have to make sure that we have enough revenue to come in to pay that, plus a certain reserve on top of that. And those are called debt service coverage ratios. So we have to satisfy those covenants. And then additionally to that, next thing we look at is what our cash reserve balances are. And we have separate buckets, just as you mentioned, for the decommission. That's a separate bucket on our cash reserves. We also have buckets to make sure that we have stabilization in case our power prices and our fuel prices fluctuate. If we have a major insurance claim and we have to pay it before we get the insurance recovery, these are all buckets of reserves that we have that set a minimum policy for each of the utilities, so that has to be covered. And then finally, that we have a return on that plant. And we are not-for-profit, but we still have a net income. And the reason we have a net income is because in the future, we have to replenish assets that wear out. And the assets are going to wear out and be replaced at a cost that won't be the same as we paid 20 years ago. So that return on that plant ensures that we'll have the cash set aside to replace it at tomorrow's cost. And so, so those are the three things that really drive that. We do design rates that are reflective of the cost of service, and we also design rates that are trying to make sure that we can reduce the risk of loss. We don't want a loss of a customer to create an undue burden to somebody else. We want to make sure the rates are structured in a way that allow for that. But also, if there are distributed resources that come on to our, onto our system in electric, for example, we want to make sure that that doesn't cause a burden and a shift to other customers as well. And we have to consider the markets, you know, what are we up against in terms of the other industrial rates in our area, for example? And we'll show that here in the slide deck, you'll see how we stack up. For electric, so getting into the electric utility, we are planning, we're excited to say, that we're planning a 10% revenue reduction in fiscal '22. This is the product of what Holland Energy Park has been able to do, along with our debt retirement. So this is really a plan that we had in place for many years, and now it's coming to fruition. We have no other rate changes planned between 2023 and 2026. So customers have really, since the plan has become operational, only seen flat or decreasing prices in electric. We're also planning the significant payoff of $91 million of debt here in 2021. And we're actually looking at the possibility, we just brought to the board this last meeting, a concept of actually doing a direct placement for the remaining debt here with a local bank for the remaining two years that we plan to pay this off, and that could save us another 1.4 million in interest. So we are actually looking at doing even more than what's stated here in this plan in order to do that. Additional changing policy that we have here, the only thing from a rate perspective that's changing, we had some decorative light, decorative streetlights, that we had to change the rates slightly to recover the cost of those fixtures, very small amounts, not most of the high, you know, lights overhead, these are more of these decorative post-type lights. And then our rate as a serve charge for industrial, we're doing per meter rather than per account because there may be several meters on a particular industry. These are very small charges, won't really add up to a whole lot for those particular accounts, and is really totally wiped out and a lot more by the rate change that's overall for those customers. So overall, they'll see a significant decrease. Yes?
I noticed on your, on the rate, on the rate sheets that we have, that the energy optimization is crossed off on all of them. I wondered what that was about.
Yeah, so we're going to continue the program. As we talked about, we're actually increasing the program. What we're doing, though, because the state doesn't mandate now a separate revenue source and segregation of those funds, we're incorporating it as a, as a normal tool in our toolbox to meet our customers' needs. And so we're saying throughout the regular rate now, we're just going to make, simplify the bill, pull in enough revenue, and we'll still operate the program rather than having a specified line item for that.
And Dave maybe even mentioned, because I, because I hear it in board meetings and otherwise, there was a name change in there, too, because it was energy optimization. But earlier, you talked about the energy waste reduction program, which is an interesting thing, too, that makes it even more complicated.
Yeah, that's correct. And so the name did change with the law change. 2008, the mandate went in place, and then later, in like 2016, there was an update to that, and they changed the name of the law from energy optimization to energy waste reduction. But yeah, I mean, it gets confusing on the bill, and customers ask a lot. The other thing that happens, too, is that in our small businesses, there can be some lumpiness in that rate, so it can actually seem like a fairly high cost to certain small businesses, where now, because it's part of the normal rate structure, it won't have that clunkiness to that, those rate tiers. So that's the decision that, or the recommendation that we are making here is to eliminate that, absorb it into our entire rates, and then operate the program at a higher level even than what we were doing before. So talked about some of the significant influencers here, I'm not going to repeat a lot of them. The maintenance program, obviously, is, is one. Gas pipeline, we built this gas pipeline to serve our, our facilities here, including Holland Energy Park. Every seven years, there has to be an integrity assessment done. They send this pig down the line that can actually read the thickness of the pipe to make sure that there are no issues here. I know it sounds, it's a, it's a smart pig, as they call it. And so it goes down and it reads, it gives you a readout, and you can find out whether you have any anomalies, and it's a good, obviously, damage protection program. And then our bond redemption is a big one, obviously, and the demolition costs, I mentioned already. Terms of the recurring, you know, we're seeing some increased pressure on our external assets of Bell River and some of our renewable resources coming into our portfolio. The tree trimming, a lot of, a lot of trade skills in the area are really seeing significant increases. We're also seeing significant increases in commodities like PVC and copper and a lot of other things, along with long-lead items. We're actually seeing with tree trimming as well, a very significant increase in that due to the wage pressures there and just the overall program demand. And I mentioned the energy waste reduction incentives, that's only for half a year. So I'll show you again in the five-year program what that looks like. But then the increased transfer on the wholesale and then the rate reduction, $10 million essentially coming off the books. This graph's a little, this chart's a little bit hard to see, but what's important here to point out, if you look at the energy waste reduction forecast this year is about 1.25 million. By the end of year five, we're growing that to 3.5 million. So this is a significant amount of investment in helping customers save energy in our, in our system, and is really a pretty aggressive program when compared to other utilities. But overall, the net income stays solid, the cash reserves are maintained, and our debt actually will be paid off over this five-year period of time. So we're in a very sound position for, from the utility perspective. So overall, we do plan on about $52 million of capital, but a lot of that is in distribution improvements over the next five years. And as I mentioned before, the community has received the benefit of their investment in Holland Energy Park by paying back not only in environmental means, but also from a fiscal standpoint. So how do we stack up? Here's the electric residential average rate. You can see that, other than Zeeland, it's always a healthy competition between us and our neighbors to the, to the east of us, we are the lowest. And we actually, for an investor-owned utility, on average, it's about a $35 a month savings versus a resident on consumer's energy. On the commercial, a little bit tighter, but still right at the bottom, other than Zeeland, right at the bottom of the list here, in terms of the bottom being better, obviously, in terms of the rate, one of the lowest. And then where we had the tightest arrangement was really on our industrial side. And here, again, Zeeland is in a, in a better position, but we have really improved our position over the last few years, especially compared to DTE, which was on par with us back in 2020. And DTE and consumers can actually also issue special contracts for some of their larger customers. And that's not something with revenue bonds that we're able to do, and so we have to only apply the tariffs. But in our tariff-to-tariff comparisons, we are now very competitive in the industrial sector against the investor-owned utilities here. I'm going to pause here just a minute, see if there's any questions about electric before I move on to broadband.
Either I missed it, or I have this mental block because I don't want to hear it. But have we made the final decision that we're going to take the plant down?
So that's going to be based upon the work that city manager and I, through, and the consultants in support of the city, have been doing on waterfront Holland. If we, you know, I think everybody knows we're heading towards a request for qualifications and then ultimately proposals for development. We are ready. We have done the work. We have cleaned up the coal yard. It's been remediated to the state's satisfaction. We've cleaned up our ash ponds on site to the details associated with the coal combustion's residual program under the federal laws. And we have characterized any waste asbestos, things like that, and other things in the plant itself. So it's ready to be put to demolition engineering firm and then ultimately contractor. What we're waiting on is, we don't know what comes back from this request from qualifications and proposal, that somebody may has an idea that says, "I want to reuse it." Well, you'd hate to act and then all of a sudden have that, have that proposal come in. And we also don't know under a competitive process what somebody might want to bring forward in terms of what they bring to the table. So we're prepared, and I think based upon what comes out of this effort on the RFQP for the, for the waterfront development, will give us a really clear direction on, on where we're going to head.
Good. Like I said, I probably blocked it out of my head because I don't want to hear that it's coming down. But I just also wanted to make it clear for the people that are watching that it, that there has been no final decision that that's going to come down.
Not, not yet at this, at this point, but I think, again, probably stay tuned here. We'll have some real clarity on that as, as we go through this process on the waterfront. Yeah, great question.
Any other questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Van Beek?
Just one comment, especially as we take a look and move from electric to others. One thing, too, that Dave and I, that we always visit as part of the budget process, and we've done that as it relates to the wholesale, but also the retail transfer to the city, the dividend payment. You'll recall that we went through and built basically kind of a protocol, a policy as it relates to that, and we've been operating under that.
This chart here shows that, actually. You can see over the five years what happens.
What happens.
Yeah, so with a reduction in revenues and rates, you know, we were using 6.25% of gross electric sales as being the basis for the transfer from retail sales to the city. And so with the reduction in rates, there's a reduction in that, that portion of the transfer. And it's a slight reduction this year of about $100,000, but it's more than made up for by the wholesale sales that we've had. And so if you look at this chart here, and under the area called contribution to the city, down near the bottom of that chart, and then contribution to the city from wholesale sales, those are the two lines that make up the total amount of transfer to the city. And so the transfer in total is going up to 700,000. But that first line, that retail portion of that's down about 100,000. And next year, it's forecasted in 2022, I'm sorry, 2023 fiscal year, to be down another 100,000 roughly, and then maybe down another 170,000 or so. This is the product of how we, with this rate reduction, it's actually a three-year average on the, on the retail revenue, so it's a smoothing effect. I think Lynn used that term last night with, with the actuaries. This is what's going on here with this rate transfer as well, that there's a, an averaging that, but eventually, we're down by the end of the fifth year, down to 5.8 million. Now, the other piece of that, though, is we have a very modest expectation for growth. And if there are signs of industry growth and prospects of even more industry growth, and if that happens, that will make up for some of the revenue loss from the rate decrease as well. So we'll continue to look at it, but it does, and it's something to point out, there is an erosion of that due to the way the formula is set up.
And Dave covered that exactly the way that I was hoping to, because I think it's important for you to follow that number and know that I follow that number very closely, along with Lynn and Dave. But one kind of administrative detail that we still intend to bring back to you is actually taking final action on that policy that's directing our action on that. So at some point in this upcoming fiscal year, we'll come before you, for those of you that may need a reminder on that, or maybe haven't heard it the first time, we'll go through all the explanation of that policy in place, and then I think we still need to take final action on that also.
Absolutely, yep.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'm going to dive into broadband here. Some key things about broadband is that we are seeing growth organically as there is new demand in really all of our areas. We serve large businesses in a system called Active Ethernet. It's a type of technology that we use. In our downtown, we call it our shared gigabit area. That's the one that we're looking at deploying more throughout the entire community. That type of technology, we are seeing some growth in that, even through the investments that we made to date. And then working on some new policies that you've seen recently, like co-location and getting into buildings and being able to do some internal wiring in there and reaching tenants where the building owner might not do that, just to try to get at more market share as it relates to that. But what's not in this budget is a major investment on a community level yet. We did not make the assumption that the community would get behind a millage or some sort of other guaranteed stream of funding. And the utility on its own can't have enough cash to actually do that investment on its own at this point. So what's built in here is more of this, continue this organic kind of incremental growth. Knowing that, we're going to have a major question in front of us as a community here very soon. And when that happens, obviously, that would change, you know, our perspective on what that looks like going forward. So for, for broadband, again, it's a healthy growth. You can see here on the top line that we're growing in revenue each year incrementally, and our net income remains strong, which gives us some cash flow. We're reinvesting about $400,000 to $600,000 a year in extensions and in replenishment of the electronics associated with that infrastructure. And so overall, for the broadband utility here, we're planning about 3.1 million of new investment. And again, that incremental demand is still there and driving some of our growth. And, and as I mentioned before, we respect the fact that the broadband task force has not yet completed its work, and that the recommendations out of that obviously could significantly change the trajectory of this, as well as the funding model that goes along with that. So we put a couple comparisons in here as well, but, but again, I think it's hard to compare, you know, this is trying to do apples to apples, and it gets a little bit challenging sometimes. But even when you look at a gig service, and again, our offering right now at about $85 a month is actually equal to or better than the comparables in that regard. And if you look at 100-meg service, again, for some of our Active Ethernet customers, you know, again, we have a very competitive situation there as well. But I will say this, you know, our funding model and our approach that we're looking at, you know, could dramatically influence that in a positive direction, too, to actually continue to lower that because of the length of the spreading out of that capital investment recovery. So, so stay tuned. Broadband is healthy, it's growing incrementally, but there's a big decision in front of us as a community. Questions on broadband at this point?
No, I don't see any. Excellent.
Okay, that was a little quicker than electric, but water, good news here for customers as well, there's no rate adjustment planned for water. We do plan some incremental inflationary-type adjustments in fiscal '23 through '26. Those rate adjustments will be necessary to support a pretty aggressive capital plan that we have. And some of the details of that capital plan involve some significant improvements in our redundancy of in our redundancy of our main transmission of water. We have a line that dates back to 1957, 36-inch line that comes out of the water plant, and it runs all the way along essentially Perry Street, runs through the airport in Park Township, and then along Lake Ottawa Beach and Douglas. And there are three lake crossings that come across the lake at different points, and that's really the, the, the main artery of our water supply to our community. And we also serve the city of Zeeland. And so that also ties off at Howard Avenue and starts heading off to Zeeland. What we can do here by adding a second line, and we're looking at a line, actually engineering a line right now along Lakewood Boulevard, is we can not only add to the redundancy and resiliency of that, but hydraulically, we can improve things because right now, the investment we made in the tie to the city of Wyoming's plant was really a backup supply. It's when our plant was down. Well, the reason it's a backup supply is because there isn't enough pipe size to accommodate feeding from Wyoming at the same time we're pumping everything that we can through that line. With the second line, we can actually isolate things in a way that allow us to hydraulically move both the water from our plant and any supplemental water from the city of Wyoming. So it gives us a really good source as growth continues. And we have an opportunity to expand, we can, instead of building new water plant where we are, we could actually use some excess capacity through the city of Wyoming's plant through, through a supplemental water agreement with this additional line that's being built. It's about a 14 and a half million dollar investment. And it can also help us really serve the city of Zeeland's needs and still fill our reservoirs efficiently as well. So, that's in our plan. It's currently being engineered at this point. It'd be constructed over the next two years. And so that's a big, a big item there. What are some of the other things that we've got going on that are influencers in water? With the high lake levels that we've had, we've actually seen an increase in what we call turbidity, which is the amount of stuff floating in the water. And so you have to then chemically treat to coagulate that and separate it out. And so we have more chemical usage. That's, that's being an influencer. We also now are taking on responsibility for investments that are made in Park Township, starting with the metering changes that we've made, so we have to amortize or depreciate that. We also have made a relationship, talking about this regionalization. We're taking on Park Township from a customer perspective, but we're also utilizing Howland Township's services and their crews to actually do maintenance services in Park Township. But that adds a new line item to our expense line as well. But it overall has improved the economic situation for the entire, entire utility. And then we also have to replace the service lines that are galvanized in our community at a rate of about 200 per year because of the changes that came in the state as a result of Flint, where Flint had the lead service lines and then had the corrosive water that leached lead out of those service lines. We do not have corrosive water here. We have Lake Michigan water. We do not have a problem with lead showing up in water. But we do have about 2,000 what are called goose necks, these things that are small 18-inch segments between the water main and the galvanized line in our community. And those all have to be replaced over the next 20 years underneath the revision in the rule. And the BPW and the city essentially's ownership of those service lines stops at the curb stop, and the homeowner owns it from that point to the house. However, the way the regulation is written, it is the public water system's responsibility to pay for the entirety of the replacement of the service line, goose neck, and the entirety of the galvanized line. So we are spending a significant amount of money over the next 20 years, and we cannot capitalize it because it's not our asset, so it hits our expense line. And those have to be expensed through accounting standards, so we actually have a very significant line item over the next 20 years that we're gonna have to get through the entirety of that. And so that's a big issue in the, in the water utility. Yes, I'm sorry, Quincy.
Is, is that for all water plants?
All distribution systems in Michigan that have either lead service lines or galvanized lines that have a lead, a lead goose neck on them, all have to do that, absolutely, yes. And so, we're not alone. There are several other entities out there that have seen very significant rate increases. The good news here, you haven't seen us come to you with a very large rate increase. Matter of fact, we're holding rates steady this year and then some increases going forward. We did a nice job. Frankly, the board, the city council, did a really good job thinking ahead to make sure that our cash flow in that utility was sufficient to do infrastructure replacement. And so we are much less in terms of the incremental impact of that than some other communities have been.
Is, is there, thank you for that. Is there any conversation at the state level to assist in that with grants or anything?
So, I think what you're seeing in some of the information coming out of infrastructure packages, for example, at the federal level, is there are opportunities potentially for water, wastewater systems maybe seeing some support. We'll have to see how that actually comes down through the state level. The state, what it does is it administers two programs. One is called a sewer revolving fund, and the other one is called a drinking water revolving fund. And we're actually utilizing the sewer revolving fund for the financing of the digester at the wastewater plant. So that kind of program, if it is enhanced by a federal stimulus, might go a long way to helping communities with that, but we'll have to stay tuned. There's, it's new enough at this point that we don't know how that's gonna come out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, great question.
Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. They've asked us before, I think, but our agreement with Zeeland, that's a fairly long-term one.
99-year with a 99-year renewal.
Good grief, okay. And, not that it's a bad thing, but, and unlike some other agreements or potential agreements that we've looked at, Zeeland, am I correct in saying that Zeeland has the opportunity to sell to other?
They, they can sell to their township areas up to 20% more than what their city is using.
Okay, so there are parameters.
Yeah, there's some parameters, some limitations on that. What there's not a limitation is what their city is using. So as their city grows, that gives them the ability to expand in terms of their service outside of their territory, but yeah.
And then just in terms of general service area, it's nice that we're able to provide the service to surrounding townships and so forth. Is there an implied or an understood boundary or anything of what that service area is about or?
Yeah, I mean, in all of our, in all of our town, agreements that we have, you know, there is right now, like for Park Township, we know where that is. It's pretty much the entirety of the Park Township. But again, there are certain returns that we got for that, like the water plant is there, you know? But also, you know, looking at easements and support for access for these large transmission lines coming through their areas. There are others that have more restrictive areas, for example. Right now, we only have a very small sliver of a very defined geographic area in Fillmore, you know, for example. And we do have, you know, some prospects of maybe, you know, looking at that. But again, I think those would be under prescribed, you know, boundaries again. So we, as we build out and change agreements, those always can have in there geographic boundaries, and they can also have limits on amounts as well. The other thing we build into those is we build a review process so that anything over a two-inch connection has to be reviewed and approved by us, so we're not dealing with agricultural loads or other really large users. So we get some level of control through those agreements on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point? All right, great. Thanks, Dave. Keep going.
Okay, so here is the, again, the water utility projections that you see here. Again, a healthy situation. Our net income remains positive. And you see the, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a whole lot more to answer on this. Everything here looks very good from a perspective with that 2%. But if we did not do the 2% next year and into the following years, we would start to threaten the, the reserve for cash. And that's because of the large amount of capital work that we have to do. So some of the things in summary, what we're doing in the water utility, we have about 46, 48 million dollars, or 47 million dollars. About 40 million of that is in distribution improvements. We are planning a bond issue to pay for the transmission project, and maybe some of the other projects, we have some chemical storage changes at our water plant and things like that that we have in our capital plan. And it does require these additional annual revenues after this year to meet those minimum reserve levels. We do see some regional growth in water that provides some economy of scales, especially the Park Township onboarding at this point. So, good news is for this year, no adjustments are needed. And so from a competitive standpoint, even though our system is one of the oldest in Ottawa County, we're among the lowest here. Again, kind of, maybe it looks like middle of the pack, but I think again, it's in the, in the country, we're one of the lowest-cost areas for water, and if you look at where we stack up with the other providers in this area, I think we're very competitive in that regard. And this is for the typical, typical customer, residential customer here. Any other questions on water? I'm done with water. I'll move on to wastewater if...
I think we're good. Oh, Scott? Yeah, can you lean into the mic so folks at home can hear you?
Right, because we serve them, right? Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me. Must be a bad con, no, it's not a bad contract. It's, it's a matter of, it's, it's a matter of this. Their system overall is newer than our system at a distribution level. So while the supply that we're receiving and they're receiving might be on par, we have to also recover all the distribution system costs. And so they have a newer system. Their capital needs might not be as great, things like that. So they have some differences there that are making a differential on, on the overall rate essentially between that. And, and I think that's the primary, you know, driver for that.
Good. Anyone else? Nope. All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, all right. Wastewater. Last utility here, but a very important project and pretty important work going on here too. Here is an area where we do need some additional resources this year. We had in the plan last year to implement a 3.6% rate increase. We have those really over the next few years. And that's because we're seeing some significant burdens on the disposal of biosolids. And we're also seeing the very large capital investment, which is still the best overall plan for us to do the digester. But it does take a significant investment in order to do that. And so that plant, again, is, the burden of that plant is shared by retail customers in the south side of Lake Makatawa. And of course, the townships on the north side are also part of that. These rate increases are on the retail side, on the south side, to pay for their portion of the plant. And we're also facing increased demand, a lot of increased demand. Our industries in this area, we are, we're blessed with a lot of industry, but we're also have a lot of industry that has high-strength waste. We have a lot of food processors. And that has caused us to have to make investments in treatment capacity. And so we have adjustments, not only in the retail rates, but also in our surcharges that we have for some of the larger strength customers. And again, the big thing here with the wastewater utility is the anaerobic digester, which is under construction at this point. You haven't seen a lot of things because everything that's happened so far has been kind of either underground or surface level. But pretty soon, a little later this spring, we'll start seeing the actual digester come out of the ground and start to take shape, so.
What color are you gonna paint it?
We ask that question a lot. That seems to be a topic that comes up at our board meetings quite a bit. And I don't know, maybe Mayor or...
Mayor has a suggestion.
Yes. Yeah. I, I keep saying Keith's portrait on it, but he doesn't like it when I say that.
One of my final wishes is don't go that way, please.
I will add just on that, you know, it's, it's fun to talk about. There was a suggestion on the board, actually, on the BPW board about some type of a public art and maybe to throw it to the public art. And we actually had kind of a sidebar conversation about that several months ago. And I did, just to make sure that I had that, I talked to a couple of the members before our last BPW board meeting to confirm. And the experts, if you would, on that had very quick and very strong recommendations that for what you're, we're building there, putting murals or different stuff on there to draw attention to this versus just keeping it more of a, a type of a neutral color would, was their strong recommendation. So no, I don't think we're putting, we're certainly not putting a picture of me on there or of council members, but I guess you could vote for that, or tulips or other things. I think we're gonna stick with, you know, kind of a, a neutral color, so.
Disney does a lot of great things with digital video projection.
Maybe it'll get graffiti.
We can do that.
You don't think we could do a crowd sourcing thing for a carbon reduction fund where we could see if your picture on there would be? All right, we're not gonna go that way. All right. So recurring items in wastewater, again, the biosolids disposal cost, also the surcharge revenue. We have a lot of customers with this high strength that are actually transitioning to pretreatment systems. So we work with them as they're growing to accommodate their waste, and then we get to a certain point where if they get more than 10% of the plant's treatment capacity, if they're taking up more than 10%, then we force them to do something where they have to control that amount so that we can not have any risk in one particular entity that might leave, but it also can otherwise stop growth happening otherwise in the community. So we have this system, and we're having customers like Kraft Heinz, Hudsonville, Request Foods did a few years ago where they go through this process of growth and then they put in the pretreatment system. So it does create some variability in our surcharge revenue as, as a result of that, but it's good for the long term. We are seeing some increases in our bond interest expense due to this sewer revolving fund, but the good news is there, just a reminder, that through the state, we were actually able to get 20% principal forgiveness on that, on that loan. So that was a really good program, and it's a 2% interest rate on those sewer revolving funds. So here wastewater has some interesting things associated with it. If you look at the, for example, the chemical and power and the treatment expenses, you see that this year for the budget, we're projecting about 1.6 million for chemicals and power and 4 million for the treatment, operating and maintenance expenses. And you could see what happens to those is that in a couple of years, that drops down by about 500,000 in the treatment expense and about 300,000 to 400,000 in the chemical and power. That is actually the benefit of the digester going in at a time when costs are escalating in the biosol disposal and in the chemical costs. So we're actually seeing a very significant benefit from that investment in the digester that's coming on. So overall, for the wastewater utility, about just under 41 million of planned capital expenditures, and about 30, about 34 million of that is the anaerobic digester and about 3.2 in sewer mains. And, and I think it's important to highlight that the digester not only is a product of a development and construction underneath a sustainable model called Envision, which is where you're looking at the best practices in design and in construction techniques. And we earned a similar type of rating for Howland Energy Park. We're gonna be seeking a certification under Envision for the development of the anaerobic digester, but it also provides us with methane for combined heat and power on site to actually power and heat the site, which also results in the destruction of about 50% of the solids that would otherwise have to be landfilled or brought to a farm field. So it's reducing truck traffic and reducing carbon emissions as it relates to the truck traffic as well. And in addition to that, it creates a biosolid product that actually is more usable for other things other than it have to be disposed of. So overall, it's a really exciting project to be happening here in Howland. Whoops. So, on wastewater, again, a little bit lower in the pack now. I think when you look at some of the other charges here, this is a comparison. A little, a little bit more on par with Zeeland here, but we see one facility, the Granville, has this beat a little bit, but otherwise, again, very competitive, you know, in terms of our rate for wastewater overall. And a lot of utilities, not just Howland, are seeing significant pressures on their wastewater utility. So overall, to summarize, if I am a customer of the BPW, my electric bill is projected to go down about $5.92 between what's today and after July 1. If I'm a water utility customer, there's no rate change. And if I'm a wastewater customer, there is about a $1.009 increase. So overall, it's about just under $5 a month saving for somebody that's on all three utilities. And that's shown on this next chart. Another important thing to point out, we lowered our elective renewable energy rate this last year to 1 cent per kilowatt hour. So people can elect up to 100% of their power to come from renewable energy. Typical customer that uses 600 kilowatt hours a month already is getting 15... already is getting 15% of their power from renewable because that's what the BPW's portfolio is. So those that elect to go up to 100% are actually going to get 85% more. So that's really the amount they have to pay for. Not 100%, they're paying 85% more because the 15% is already in their portfolio and in their bill. For a typical customer, that'd be about $5.10 a month. So you can see that the rate relief is greater than the amount that they would actually pay to go 100% renewable. So on July 1, if somebody opted to, they could say, I don't want all of the rate decrease. I want to convert it, basically. Still save 82 cents a month, but also have all their power on renewable. So just putting that out there, making sure that people understand that, they might be watching at home if they have an interest in that. We are promoting it. You probably have seen a bill stuffer. You see a lot of other activity. We are trying to make it available. This is not just residential customers. We do make it available to our commercial and to our industrial customers as well.
Yeah, Dave, did I receive an email on that? Because I know I just signed up for that. And I think I received an email, clicked a button on the email and signed into my account and transferred over. Okay. It was literally that easy. I did it in about two minutes.
Excellent.
So easy that I thought, did I actually do it?
You're set then. Yeah, great.
Yeah, go ahead, Nikki.
Is there a limit on the, is there a limit on the number of customers?
You know, that's, I know that, and I appreciate that Councilwoman Raymond pointed this out a little while ago before the meeting. And that is, it says that on the rate, but we are not limiting it. And we really have not, we've, we want to see more demand for it. We actually are encouraging it. We're promoting it. It does say first come, first served, and, but there really is not a cap or a limit on it right now. And so, you know, we'll evaluate it as things go along, and obviously, we have to secure more resources in order to provide that. And we are going to actively pursue those resources. As I mentioned, there's two other projects that are on the horizon that we're bringing in, and we can also secure renewable energy credits at a more economical rate than if somebody wanted to go and try to access that market directly as a resident. And that's really what this program is about, is that they can, there'll be actual Michigan renewable resources that have a certificate, authenticating their production that gets retired on behalf of those customers that elect this renewable energy rate.
That'd be a nice problem to have if everyone did that.
That's, that's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave at this point? All right. Great. Thank you, Dave.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Dave is going to stay seated here, however, though, while we do the Holland Energy Fund. And I, just because Lynn's going to present the Holland Energy Fund, but Dave's very involved with that also. I will say, though, at this point, kind of, it's what I've been doing right after each department is done making their presentation. For those of you that have done this for a long time and maybe don't know any different than, oh, yeah, we have a municipal utility that does these things for us. I come from other places that don't have that. And I certainly talk to a lot of colleagues because most of my colleagues do not have the ability of having a local partner like a BPW that does this work. And when you take a look at a variety of things, big and small, big like the ability and the input and the transfer to our general fund because we have an electric utility is big. The wholesale that we've been able to take advantage of, it's not going to be there forever, certainly at the amount that we have, but the impact that that has, for example, on our capital improvement fund that we're so happy that Matt Van Dyken is taking care of, pretty large. The fact that we have partners to go through and take a look at an exciting opportunity like broadband, that we're doing an exciting initiative like Waterfront Holland, pretty big. But it's even all kinds of little things, too, like the fact that Dave's talking about burying our electric lines. And the amenity and the beauty in our community because that's happening and the reliability then because of the electricity is probably less understood, but for someone in my business and knows how that happens in other places where you beg some of the utility companies to bury it and then they send you a bill for it, big deal. So we're just really happy that, and I think we can all say this, right? That people before us made the decision to have a municipal utility and that we have it in place, so. We're lucky to have this and it's run well. So thank you, Dave, and to your board and your team.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Lynn.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's good to see you again this evening. Holland Energy Fund. So the Holland Energy Fund is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that supports the city's long-range community energy plan. A major focus of the fund is the home retrofit program. And along with that, the ability for residents to opt for the on-bill loan program. So as we look at the revenues and the expenditures, we will see an impact this year from COVID, mostly because the program requires an energy audit. So obviously, at the early stages of COVID, everybody was trying to figure out how to redo their business to try to make it COVID-friendly. So we did see where we typically would, we had about half of the rebate program than we, that we would normally see in a year, mostly because of the lack of being able to get into the homes. So we'll first start with the income side. The, most of the income comes from contribution, and that contribution comes from the city. And the budget this year includes a contribution of 325,000. And included in that is a special 50,000 that we had originally intended for the prior year to support some of the plans for the community energy plan. So of course, that has been moved to 22. On the interest income side, here we see a little bit lower than normal, and this has to do more with the refinancing that we're seeing going on in the financial markets because rates are so low. We've had a higher-than-normal payoff of the loan programs because residents are refinancing and getting lower rates and just paying off the bills. So our interest income is a little bit lower to go along with the lower number of loans we have right now. So moving to the use of funds, again, we see here the largest use is the amount we spend on the home energy retrofit program. And this is the amount that we provide in rebates, and we had some good news. For most of this past year, we've actually offered a 20% rebate, trying to incentivize that program. And that kind of did help reinvigorate the program after kind of the COVID slowdown. And then in the budget fiscal year '22, we actually had been working on like kind of a special program, kind of targeted program, and that, too, had been put on hold, but we have funding set aside to look back into that. And we do recently have the new position, Dan Burisma, who will be working with this program. So he, too, will give some new input into some ideas for the program and how to get it going again. The expenditures under the on-bill loan program, those costs are what we pay for both the loan origination services and the loan servicing costs. And then community energy plan, we have dedicated $173,600. And a lot of that is going to be on training and education efforts and then, yet to be determined, once we hear from the community energy plan, what the, what kind of potential funding we might need to support those efforts. And finally, the rest is interest and some, a little bit of administrative fees. And interest, again, is a little lower because the on-bill loans are down. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Nikki?
Why not, right?
Sure.
Yeah, with the, I'm happy to hear that Dan will be working with this because the energy retrofit program has, and part of it's COVID, but it is just, to me, languished. And we talked about it in the the meeting, the energy fund meeting, and some of it's perceived, the entrance into the program, you have to spend $10,000 to do over your house, whether it's windows or insulation or whatever. And that seems like a high bar. The payoff is huge. I mean, down, you know, and then this is just something people have to understand. So I think to have someone designated for this is going to be necessary because there's that gap. Hey, we've got this great program, but nobody's using it. And it's not just the COVID, it's the understanding and the, some of the people who could most benefit from it maybe don't get this, don't understand or don't know what's available. There's funding, there's all kinds of things available, and let's do it. I mean, this is our goal. This is part of our goal, and so I'm happy to hear that is going to happen. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Nikki, I'm sorry, but I'm going to correct you on a couple of things.
Please.
First of all, we had somebody doing it. That was Ken Freestone's primary job.
Yes.
Second of all, I just had the program done this winter myself. Absolutely fantastic program to go through. WGMB is fantastic to work with, the follow-through and things like that. And between George and I, before Dan got hired and that transition, we were trying to brainstorm how to revitalize and how to get this promoted out there again. So I'm hoping that Dan's going to be able to fresh eyes on it, put some, put some, I'm not going to use fireworks. Some lights and sparks and everything out there to get this fired off again, because you're absolutely correct. The energy that I saw for what I had done, and there's all different levels. I don't know where this 10,000 came from, but there's all different levels that you can do. The people that come in are absolutely fantastic at what they do. They go through with a fine-tooth comb. They sit down and explain everything to you. You can either do it on-bill financing, you can do, not do it on-bill financing, whatever you want to do. But you're absolutely correct. It's a great thing that we have. It needs to be utilized some more, but we need to get it marketed better.
Yes.
And even though this is-
It's languishing a little.
You're right. Even though this is just a part of Dan's job, whatever we can do to promote this, it's going to be better for everybody, specifically the homeowners.
Quincy?
I guess I have a question. The individual, is it Mark? That's going to be doing this? Dan, I'm sorry. So his role is that going to be consistent with marketing as well?
So Dan, if you can envision a couple people that we've had in our past, Dan is now a full-time combination of part-time Ken Freestone and part-time allocated for some of these purposes, Aaron Thalenwood. So what we did is we combined that into one position, combined some of the responsibilities. I think now we have more time for these responsibilities. And I think there's just advantages also in having someone that's full-time, that's here, you know, all week long. So he's really excited about it. He's got a lot of expertise. He's got a lot of, you know, energy and new ideas. So, yeah, we're, he's committed and we're committed to the broad range of things that he does, including what we're talking about here.
Okay. My concern is we have, and this is just, this is kind of an overarching thing for me as far as marketing, because we have so many good programs in the city that people don't know about. And when I look at this and see the numbers and hear some of the input, you know, this individual is going to be working on the meat and potatoes of this because of his expertise, right? But how do we still, how do we get that word out? Because he's probably going to be working with people who are interested, not so much people who don't know about it.
Yeah, so, so what I'd say, Quincy, is part of, and Mark, Mark is the expert on this, and I don't think we want to go into the detail here, but we have a very complete education plan on all things sustainability and as a component of that, this program. And like Dave talked early about, a education component in bill stuffers on the renewable energy program. So and quite frankly, like, I get it. We're competing with a larger market that everybody's trying to educate everybody and buy more things and about these programs. And we live in this time, right, where it's like everybody's attention is grabbing. So, so we're probably always going to disappoint, I'm just going to be honest. I like to manage expectations. For my entire career and for the rest of my career, I'm probably going to have councils say, you gotta do a better job at education, okay? And we talk to people all the time that don't know what we do, and okay, I, there is no doubt in my mind that there's people in the city that don't know all the things that we do. But we're always pushing the edge and trying to figure out how to do it better. But I, I can guarantee in 15 years, there's still going to be someone that says, I didn't know you do that.
Right, understood.
So there is, there is absolutely an eye on the target with intent, with people, with money and with strategy. And, and we're going to, we're going to keep going after it.
Okay, that, that's good for me.
Quincy, I'm going to, I'm going to, even though it's good for you, I'm going to add just a little bit of anecdotal information that I've got. I had the chance on Monday when we were delivering the recycling carts to talk to Dan for a little bit. And the first thing Dan said to me is, we have so many great stories to tell. We have so many great opportunities for people. I want to get that message out. So just to give you a higher level of confidence in the fact that I think we've got the right guy in there who's not just going to be interested in sitting at his desk and doing the paperwork piece of this thing and just dealing with the people that are already interested in doing it. He wants to reach out into the community and make sure that the community knows that we've got this going on to grab them and bring them in. I mean, that's, that's completely the attitude I got from him in just the short conversation I had with him on Monday.
And-
If I could add on to that anecdotal, I had a chance to work with Dan and continue to have a chance to work with Dan on the Materials Management Task Force. You aren't going to find a bigger fireball than that man. He knows his stuff. He's been around for a long time. He's been around in a number of different arenas, so he's got the broad range to be able to cover everything. I think Keith said it well, or somebody said it well, we've got the perfect, not perfect, excuse me. We've got the near-perfect person for what we're trying to accomplish with bringing the Thalenwood and the Freestone arena together to be able to accomplish and move us, move the dial a little bit forward. So I'm going to talk him up. He's a great guy, and I think he's going to do great for us.
I was going to say, you talked about managing expectations, and there was a big expectation, I think, when this retrofit program, there were goals set, and they weren't met for a variety of reasons. And so figure out the reasons, change the goal, keep the goal, work differently. So that's all part of it. I, you're exactly right there, and marketing is part of it.
Great. Anyone else? Anything, anything more, Lynn, on, all right, Holland Energy Fund? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
See you Monday.
I believe the next we have up is Public Safety Services, and we've got Chief Messer. And we have, we've got Captain Tinney, too? I don't know. It was done really well last night.
The city clerk, assistant city manager, chief janitor.
Good evening, gentlemen. For those at home, we're sanitizing and making sure that everything is all clean.
Good evening, everyone. Going to have Captain Tinney start here to talk about the fire aerial. Really been a significant upgrade for us. I want to say thanks for all the support of that and finding people for that because that was something I really needed.
I'm just going to make it a little aside. Great, great idea, starting out the presentation with a fire truck. I think that that's a-
Well, you can start up a little with you. It was just over 15 months, we came before council.
Oh, sorry.
Just over 15 months ago, we came before council and requested your permission-
Just over 15 months ago, we came before council and requested your permission or authorization, rather, to purchase the vehicle. Over roughly three weeks, we've had an opportunity to have that vehicle in Holland, and we've been doing most of our training and in-service and orientation on the vehicle. We've trained all of our full-time staff, all three shifts, including our admin staff, on the operation of it. And it's amounted to about roughly 430 hours that we've invested already in trying to make sure that we're ready to accept that truck and to put it into service. We are all anxious to do that and get that put into place. But as an organization, you know, we have two core values, we have a number of core values, but the two primary ones that are effective here are the professionalism and respect. We made it our mission to make sure that we know this vehicle inside and out, that we're well-trained to operate it and put it in service, that's our commitment. And it's also our commitment that we respect that equipment. This is, we just have the privilege of operating it. It's the community's aerial, and we want to make sure that we're prepared to do that. As of yesterday, that vehicle returned back to the dealer for some additional dealer prep. They're going to begin to start mounting equipment, they'll be doing some inspections, and that should be returning to the city. And once it does, we will place it in service, and our previous unit will be placed out of service. So again, Chief mentioned this, we are very thankful for the commitment that everybody's made to make sure that this replacement took place. And we do believe it's going to fit well into our operations, especially when we look at the core city and there's areas that this area will actually be able to be placed that the other one probably was not as effective. So again, I'd be a bit remiss if I didn't thank some of the key members of the department that were involved. Lieutenant Joel Cook took a leadership role in making sure that this truck was put together appropriately. He was assisted by Lieutenants Brower and Stokes as well. So again, kudos to them, and we thank everybody that's been involved, so Chief Messer as well. I think his advocacy in making sure that everybody was aware of the need was very important in this, so.
I do know that, I heard, anyway, I heard a rumor that City Manager got to drive that fire truck. Is there going to be an opportunity for the members of the City Council to?
While I asked, I was not allowed.
They follow orders.
Next up, I want to- But, but I will say, yes. There will be, and we look forward to an opportunity again where I think not only that, but for example, there's a lot of interest, and I think all of you would like to see the Detective Tesla at some point. We have some equipment with COVID, that we got some grant monies that we installed in some of the units. So at some point, we'll probably do kind of an equipment show and tell for you over the summer or fall.
That would be great, thank you.
I forgot to tell you about the Tesla. I'll tell you that later.
Next up, we'll talk about fire station replacement. At this time, we've been able to enter into a contract with KZF out of Cincinnati and GMB. We'll be working together on the initial planning and design of the facilities, basically coming up with a capital improvement plan for both our Waverly Station and our Collin Park Stations. Shortly, we'll begin the planning process, or the programming process. We'll be meeting with GMB to go through the building assessments. We'll keep council abreast of what's going on as that continues to evolve, so.
I also want to say thanks to Matt Mendyken, who's been instrumental in all of that, and really kind of the brains behind that, and really the communication piece back and forth. So we know he's done great work on Civic Center and many other buildings. So just want to thanks for all your work with that. It's made life a lot easier for us, because he's probably more of an expert in that area than we are, so thanks.
Moving on to the SCBA replacement program, self-contained breathing apparatus. We were able to enter into a, what we call a regional grant request into the, what's called the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, that's administered by FEMA. And we've been able to partner with eight departments in Ottawa County to do that. Regional grants do have some pretty good success. And we figured being able to put together a project with commonality of SCBA, interoperability, those types of things would be very important. Plus, we also get some, there's purchasing power when you have eight departments. I think the end total cost, or estimated cost of the project was roughly just under $2 million when we look at SCBA's just in Ottawa County. So no news is good news, we're still in the running for that, and we would expect to hear any announcements on potential awards somewhere around the end of June, maybe middle of July. Again, that'd be something we'll keep you up to date with. If that is approved, we'll have to come back to council with your approval to finalize the grant and our contribution to it, which is, which will be a 10% match.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
How long do those apparatus, i, apparatus, last? They need to be replaced?
There are a number of factors that play into that. There are nationally recognized standards, it could probably save roughly 10 years. The other thing is obsolescence. There are a lot of features in some of our packs that were purchased. By the way, our previous, or our current packs were purchased under a FEMA grant. So we were successful there, but roughly 10 years. And that is predicated on some of the warranties. There are a lot of electronics in these devices today, and we're finding right now, we're just getting to the point where we actually have heads-up displays in them, where they actually tell you how much air you have left in the pack itself. Those are needing to be replaced. October, those went out of warranty, so we're starting to see our expenses creep up. And this was an opportunity to come together with our mutual aid partners in the county and try to do something together, and also lower the cost that we would incur as a city, so.
Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, before we transition here somewhere, not so much a question, but as a comment and a realization on my part, I was reading through here in regard to the Waverly Station and our efforts here to look at upgrading both stations. But I hadn't really thought, this is one of those duh moments, I guess, if you look at the amount of growth on the east side of the city and potential growth there, the value of that station is increasing. So the importance of that upgrade and making sure it's ready to respond to that growth is all the more important. So just something to, for folks to keep in mind, I think. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point, or comments? All right, great, keep rolling.
Just want to say, Dave, that we actually have, we had that discussion about, a week ago, about that particular station, and that, exactly what you said, we need to look at that and the growth of all the buildings going up in that area, the residential, down at the south end of town, 16th Street Corridor, all of that area. So we're really going to take that into account when we look at that building, and how big do we make it and those kind of things. So that has been a topic of discussion that we have had.
And I didn't realize Chris was going to, thank you, Captain Tinney, appreciate it.
He just left, boom. Excuse me, the WatchGuard body cameras. Currently, we have the WatchGuard camera system in our cruisers. We have a four-camera system in our cruisers, so that's why we're really focusing on the WatchGuard body cams, because they will integrate with our current WatchGuard cameras that are in our cruisers. There'll be a few parts that are needed to put in the trunk to make that integration work. But that's why we've been focusing on these body cameras. And we've been doing this for several years now. I know I talked to City Manager when he first came on board, and we've had, and prior to that, we've had discussions about these, so we were just kind of waiting for some of the technology to advance, some of the FOIA laws to change, and so on and so forth. So this has been a topic of discussion for probably four or five years. We just felt that this year, upcoming year, will probably be a good year to transition into the body cameras as well. Employee tracking system, our Guardian Tracking Software System, I know there's been a lot of conversation about this. We've had this in place for about 10 years now. I think it's a great management system for all of our employees. When you have that many number of officers and other employees, it's a good tracking system. It's a good early warning system that we've had in place for a while now, and we're looking to upgrade that. Probably the summertime, summer, at some point, we've talked to the manufacturer, and they're going to have an upgrade available in the summer. We don't know exactly the cost yet, but we certainly want to, we think it's been a quality system that we've used, and we want to continue to use it, and we want to upgrade it. So it'll probably upgrade its searchability, and some of, it'll add some more number of ways to track certain things and categories that we can add into the system. That will be the upgrade coming this summer.
I just have a question out of curiosity, it's not really budget-related, but when you're talking about employee tracking, you're talking about administrative? Are you talking about kind of a security locating them when they're on the job, or is this?
Yeah, it's an employee tracking system where it's kind of an electronic employee file on everyone. And there's early warning systems in place within that tracking system. So yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with as far as GPS or tracking employee or the car. It just basically tracks all of their internal files or training, anything that they may be involved in, that the flags are set and forth in place. And then their supervisors are made aware of any of those flags that come up. And I know there's a question about that later on, I could probably, I can probably answer that question now, and do that now. So really, what it is, is we have the system set in place, and it flags supervisors in five areas. It's external citizens' complaints, internal performance review, training issues or concerns, accident crashes or incidents involving city vehicles, and use of force. Those are the five areas that it flags. So whenever there's a certain number set, when that number's hit, that flag is hit. And then supervisors, anybody that's in that system which is set in place, where there's a hierarchy, where the officer or firefighter, their supervisor is notified, then their supervisor is notified. And then there's a need for, there's a must really, for the supervisor then to act on that flag. They then enter something into the system, and then that supervisor's supervisor is notified and is told that there is action taking place on that particular flag. So everyone's made aware of it when that happens. And one of the biggest reasons why we do that is because we have shift bids all the time. Let's say for police, for instance, every September, we have shift bids. So there may be officers that work for one supervisor for a year, who then switches to another supervisor for a year. And then maybe after six months, they get reassigned to a different position. So that person may have two or three supervisors over the course of a couple of years. So this is an excellent way to do that, where that supervisor can go in, hit on that employee, and they can find out everything about that employee in the last two years. And that supervisor would then be red-flagged, when things add up, that that supervisor may not have been aware of when he or she wasn't their supervisor a year ago. So that system's been in place, and it works, it's, it works great. It's all audited, you can tell who's in and who's out of it, and it's a great system.
Great, sounds like a great way to be, you're right, to track, but also to be able to provide that accountability. And I love the idea that the supervisor supervisor gets notified as well so that there's a, to make sure that there's some appropriate action taken if there's a, if there's a hit on that system. I really like that, thank you. That was, I was not, I was expecting you were going to say it's merely administrative, but I like this a whole lot better than, you know, just keeping track of a personnel file or, you know, how well they are at showing up for work. This is a whole lot more than that, I really, thank you for explaining that, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome, and it also tracks positive things, albeit there's officers or firefighters or whoever it may be that can put in compliments for someone who did a great job on this particular complaint, or did a great job in training, or this training officer that did a great job in training, or the captain did this or that, and they can put compliments in there, and that those are also tracked underneath that employee. So when you click on this employee, it will show you everything from accidents, compliments, complaints, traffic crashes, or other incidents involving damage to a particular crew. I mean, it's all in there, so you can see, and it's all chronologically put in place, good, bad, otherwise. And then that supervisor who has a new officer or a new firefighter on their shift can go through that and see everything that's happened in the last year or two, or three, or however long they want to go back. And therefore, they know that employee, their performance evaluations, early performance evaluations are also in there. So everything is all underneath that electronic file. And so with a click of a mouse, you can figure out that employee, and it also will flag that new supervisor who may not have been aware of some issues that occurred two years ago.
That's great.
So this, oh, did you want?
I think Scott was first, but then, yeah, we'll do Scott, and then Nikki. I'll let you two, you can arm wrestle for it if you want.
Your turn.
Gentlemen, I won't do that. So it's not just focused on the employee either, right? I mean, it's the organization. If you see multiple people having the same issue or same problem, maybe it's a policy issue. Maybe it's something internally you have to change, might be a training issue overall for the department. So there might be other gaps within the agency, it's not just focused on the individual. I mean, the individual is what's red-flagged, but it could also show a pattern of other things as well, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. We can certainly see, say, if three or four officers were flagged for some reason, and we would need to look at that policy or how we're training or something like that to do away with that particular activity. So sure, yeah, we look at it as a whole, it's not just each individual officer that we would look at it. But, you know, we haven't, we haven't seen anything like that, but yeah, it would cover that as well.
Nikki?
Yes, so between the tracking software and the one above it, the body cams, it has really changed law enforcement. I mean, it's, I mean, employees are being tracked both every day and then on the job. And so how is that, how do the, your employees feel about that? How do the officers feel about that? Is that helpful to them for the most part? Or is it, it could be considered mildly intrusive, too?
Well, the Guardian Tracking, we've had in place, say, for a decade now, so that's just kind of second nature. That's how we operate, everyone knows that, the supervisors understand that. It's, there's really not much conversation about it, it's just who we are and what we do, and that's how we track everything. As far as the body cams, when we go to that, many years ago, there was some reluctance to probably go with those. But in the last couple of years, all of our staff, including our supervisors, including our union, including our command staff, they're more than ready to bring on body cameras. They're, they've seen what's out there, they've, there's been certain allegations made, and they are ready to have body cameras. I've talked to Zeeland, Muskegon, Battle Creek, I've talked to a lot of other agencies, and they are, they want to see the body cameras. There are careers that were going in that direction, and they're for them, and they're waiting to implement them.
That's good to know, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
Actually, just to supplement that just a little bit, Nikki, and I know what you meant. You said, well, maybe policing or it's changed with this. And I'm going to take a little bit different tack, because I spend a lot of time in conversations with the chief and directly with his command staff and other employees, because it's a very important point of oversight that I have responsibility for. And, you know, the chief spent a lot of time about the culture and the core values of the department. I'm going to answer it a little bit different than the way that the chief answered it. I'm going to say, I don't think the culture or the core values or what the department does has changed. But I think, I think some of these programs maybe change because there's more insight to, and then there's more of the ability to make sure that there's accountability or kind of eyes on, body cams in particular, eyes on what they do. But from the, from the interactions that I've had and the discussions, I really don't think it changes what they do on this, on serving citizens every day. It's just a different, a degree of accountability and assurance, both for all of, for me in oversight role, for you in oversight role, but also in assurance for the community. And I think it's important, and that's why, you know, when I let off yesterday that this is the, the one area where in a tight budget year, we're recommending making an expansion. I think this discussion is a really important one, and that's really the reason that we felt, even in a budget year where, quite frankly, we're not balanced, we still are recommending making this investment.
Yeah, Mike?
I just have to, I have to add on to that, because I'm not being bashful about the fact that I, that I'm very supportive of all of our Department of Public Safety, fire and police. But maybe a little bit to your point there, Nikki, it's, and I heard the word culture. Right from the get-go of when a prospect is being interviewed, he's being interviewed in the vein of what the culture and what the community of this specific department is. So right from the start, they know what's expected. They know what the culture is, and if they don't fit that culture for some reason, there's red flags that hit even before that, and they say, thanks, but no thanks. Because it doesn't fit what the overall- And they say, thanks, but no thanks, because it doesn't fit what the overall, and it goes the same thing, I think, Chris, with the Fire Department. I'm sorry, Captain Tenny. It, it's that type of in-depth that the, the leadership from Keith to Matt and on down value for the public, specifically the Public Safety Department, because of what is expected from our citizens. They haven't let that down in all the years I've been there, whether it's been Matt or, or Krydoff before that. That's just the way it is. And I'm, I'm extremely proud of that, and that's why I have absolutely no bones about supporting them. I hope that helps.
Yeah, Quincy?
I, I just want to add a little bit to that. Matt, you made the comment that there was a little bit of time before when there was, I, I would say, using the, I guess, a little pushback, not wanting to do the body cams, to now we are looking at, or the HPD is looking at and embracing having body cams. That just gives, in my opinion, and not to go over the core values, but that just embodies the core values that they have to always push for advancement, always push for, I guess, the better. So, and also just showing the community again, that this is something that we want to do to improve. So I think, I think it's a, it's good. It's something I support, and I don't see anything negative out of it. And it just shows again, as Keith iterated, in this budget year that we have, we are still, still pushing to get that, so. Cool.
Thank you, Quincy.
I should clarify too, that some of the reasons why we were a little bit reluctant in the beginning was because of the technology. Some of the iris, the shutter speed issues, the, the certain angles of the camera, the, the older technologies had the FOIA issues with privacy, not necessarily for the officer, but privacy for the citizens, where there were not laws in place to protect people in their own homes as far as releasing videos and those kind of things. Those didn't change until I think seventeen or eighteen. So early on, there were a lot of things that we thought, we didn't really have a problem going with the body cameras. We just didn't want to be the first few departments that were kind of out there and foreseeing some of those problems that may occur with the FOIA laws and with some of the technologies. So we kind of waited to make sure those technologies were taken care of. We feel like they have been. Some of the FOIA laws have changed to protect the privacy of some of the citizens inside their homes. So now we think is a better time to move in that direction.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Accreditation process, we're, we're probably about halfway through. Hopefully, we're, we're halfway through. We're hoping to have this completed maybe by fall, maybe a little bit longer than that. But we have purchased the Power DMS software. I'd say there is initial setup costs, and there is some annual costs that are gonna be associated with that. But we feel pretty good where we're at now. A lot of our policies, we've had, I went through several of them myself. We've had some minor changes. We've added a couple of new policies. But we think when this is done and over with, we'll have a very strong, comprehensive set of policies. We, we feel like we have those now, but we just wanted to make sure that we, that they're appropriate, everything's in place. We're not missing anything, and have somebody come in and take a look at those, and add, add a few that we didn't have. I think it's a good thing. And when this is all over with, we're gonna feel even more comfortable than we are now with the current policies that we have in place. Crisis Intervention Team, this is kind of something that's been going on behind the scenes a little bit. We've been meeting for about a year now. Myself, the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department, and Ottawa County Community Mental Health have been meeting, talking about how do we partnership with each other? How do we work together more collaboratively about dealing with some of these mental health concerns and issues of our community? We've also had some conversations with Holland Hospital, and there's some grant funding that's in place now. We're looking at, there's been some applications that are put in by the Community Mental Health. There's currently a team in place, and I don't know if many of you know this, it started March one, I believe it was, where there's a two-person team through Community Mental Health for individuals that are under the age of twenty-one in Ottawa County. That this two-person team, they work from two P to, two PM to ten PM, Monday through Friday. And they're able to come out and assist law enforcement. When we have any kind of issue concerning anyone with mental health concerns, we can call this team. Right now, it's, as I say, under the age of twenty-one. And then they'll come out and assist us to interview the, the individual, the family, try to get them some assistance. So that's been very, very helpful. That started March one. I think that's a, I don't know, two or three-year grant or something for that. But this Crisis Intervention Team will be for adults, and that's what we're hoping to, and we're gonna, we're hoping to supply some staff time, some training money toward this. Because as we all know, mental health's been a major concern for everyone, especially in this community for many years now. And it's just a matter of getting the funding, getting the staff in place, and getting the communication and the collaboration between law enforcement and Community Mental Health, and, and the Fire Department, and, and our ambulance services. All of them need to be, be involved at the table. So we're planning on doing that. It's been a long process, but I think you'll see some more movement here in the next six months as far as getting that team established.
Yeah, I'd just like to really thank you for your leadership on that and your, and your, you know, proactive thinking about the Crisis Intervention Team. I work a lot with Community Mental Health, and they are very excited about this project and, and looking forward to, and to moving ahead with it. And I know that when we work with people trying to house folks who are homeless and, and have serious mental health conditions. In fact, we were just sort of brainstorming today about somebody, and we were thinking, oh, this would be a great opportunity for the Crisis Intervention Team. And so I just really appreciate your leadership on that. And, and Captain Tenny, also recently, I, I learned about a homeless outreach team that the Fire Department has. Is that, is that, this, they call it a hot team in Grand Rapids. They, we had to have, we needed to, somebody needed to connect with our street outreach team at Community Action House, and they called the Fire Department. Fire Department was right on top of it and knew exactly who to call and could really connect with the folks who were doing street outreach. So I just really appreciate all that communication and cooperation with some of the nonprofits in the community that's, you know, helping folks that are really, really struggling.
Thanks. And Robertson Research Institute, Brain Health Phase Three, we just started that. I know they've spent a lot of time at the Fire Department. They've had a lot of interviews with the Fire Staff. Captain Tenny and I just met with Joel Robertson last week and went over a lot of the things that, he has recommendations on how to make improvements. So we're, we're kind of brainstorming on how to do that. That process is gonna start with the Police Department here in the next few months as far as a lot of these group interviews and those kind of things. So that'll be a Phase Three. It's been very, very beneficial and really been great working with Joel and his team. He's actually, he really is kind of taking us under his wing. And like I've said before, I think, I think he's kind of fascinated with how this team works. And he's, he asks questions after question. He calls me, how do you guys do this? And, and he, he just, he's always kind of picking my brain as far as, you know, how, how things are done and why we do things this way. And, and he's really kind of individually come over, I think, a lot more for us than a lot of other departments that he's been involved in, because there's a lot of people that, that work for that Research Institute. But I have contact with him all the time, and he's got questions about this or that or the other. So I think we're, I think we're really learning from each other, which I think has been very beneficial for everybody involved. So we, I'm looking forward to Phase Three, because I think that's really gonna get down to the nuts and bolts of it, where he's gonna make some recommendations, which he already has at the Fire Department. He'll come back with the Police Department and say, you really need to look at doing this or that or the other. And, and he understands, you know, he talked to us too, this is, this is like, if budgets weren't a concern and those kind of things, he understands that there's gonna be some things that just aren't gonna be able to be done just because of the, the cost. But, so he's got a couple of lists. Well, this is the, the best, but here's some of the things that you can do that are probably less costly. So we're looking into those. And I think that some of the things that he's, he's brought up have, have great merit, and it's, it's been great just kind of listening to him and, and to see how he, he thinks about our organization. So. Great. I, I really appreciate the counsel. This is year number three. So it's, you know, the first year was great, and then you guys continue to, you know, help us fund this. I, I think it's very beneficial for all of our employees and would highly recommend it for any other department for sure.
Yeah, I, I think that fits right into what we've been talking about throughout, throughout your presentation. And we talked about the employee tracking software. And then with, with Quincy saying, hey, we want to make sure that, you know, we've got the best equipment and we're doing it right with the right equipment, and that the department wants that. And Mike saying, hey, from, from day one with a prospective officer, we're, we're looking at whether they fit into the culture and, and how they do it. And with the, the ongoing monitoring and training and, you know, the, the line that keeps popping into my head is one of the officers saying, well, after I went through, you know, Robertson Brain Research, I realized I shouldn't be eating as much red meat. You know, that I'm, I'm not sure that there are many, many, many employers, many businesses, many departments that, that think that granularly about how what you put in your body can have an effect on your job performance. I think that's absolutely fantastic. And no, I didn't miss the pitch of, you know, hey, here's the expensive good stuff that we could do. That didn't get, that didn't get past me, and I'm sure it didn't get past anybody else up here. So. And apparently, it didn't get past the city manager either. So, so I'm, I'm glad to see that you're continuing on with Phase Three. Thank you for that.
Yeah. And, and red meat's not good for anyone. So none of us, none of us should be eating red meat. So that was, I think that was probably me that brought that up. I, since he, he recommended that to a lot of us, and we've all decided to kind of do that, along with, you know, other things and supplements and those kind of things. And I, I don't know, maybe it's just, you know, mentally, but I, I think it's made a big difference for a lot of people in their lives. Just little, little changes here and there with your diet or exercise make a big difference overall. And when it comes from a, a guy like that, or after they've really looked at you thoroughly, you have a tendency to maybe do that, more likely to do that than just do it on your own. I know it was for me. So it's been, it's been, it's been awesome. It's been a great, a great three years for sure. So. Anything else on that? Command staff succession planning, and I know probably Lynn or city manager can jump in here, but we, we continue to move down that road. I know we talked about this last year, and it's, it's a year closer now. We're about, we're about a year and ten months away now from the, the first command officer retiring. But we've, I don't know how much detail you want to get into that. I know that there's been a firm that's been hired to look into that, and I'll, I want to talk a little bit about that. But I don't know if you want to jump in and, and?
Go ahead.
Or Lynn, and, and you have a lot more of the specifics than I do. Lynn's come on board, been awesome. She's really dug into this thing and, and it's kind of different, kind of, I think, a little bit different perspective. And we've hired a firm, and I don't, I don't know if you want to, I don't actually remember the name of the firm. Oh, actually, I do. But I don't know if you want to say it. But we, I actually remember the name. But we've hired a firm that they've, they're taking a really comprehensive look at this, looking at, looking at the different programs that could be available, or different incentives to, to keep the current command staff around, or incentives in the future to have some people that are interested in those positions. So I know we've just got a update, I think, today in email, saying that they've got a lot of things that they, they need to, they got on paper, but they're gonna meet with us here the next, in the next week or so to try to relay those to us. And I don't know if you have any, you probably have way more specifics than I do. But of course, you know, the pension is looked at, the drop program, there's a lot of things that we talked about in the past that they're looking, they're looking at. But I think it's gonna be a, a longer list maybe than we've had in the past, because these, these, this firm is kind of an expert at this in Michigan. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they have as far as possibilities for us.
Right. I would just say that this firm does seem to have a lot of different expertise that they can bring to the table. And I think they'll be more likely to give us some out-of-the-box type of look at, at our situation. So, yeah, we are excited. They should be back to us early next week, I think, with the first kind of get-together and chat again.
Great. Any questions about the succession planning? All right.
And did, did I answer that for you? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief on anything? Yeah, go ahead, Dave. Oh, is that just a thumbs up? I just caught it out of the corner of my eye. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief, Captain Tenny. We're in good hands. And I know you probably spend more time in a lot of ways with, oh, except he's, he's doing my job there.
You talk, I'll, I'll wait.
All right. Well, yesterday I was told I talk a lot, Matt. So although you took a lot of time here today. So we're really appreciative of the work that they do. We definitely want the command staff, you know, we think it's great leadership. So that last item that we talked about too, just to plug that in. If we, it, it's been tough years, so we want them to choose to stay, but we also want to make sure that we have a system that gives that option. So we'll continue to pursue that and, and communicate that with you. The implications, you know, kind of the interesting thing that we had talked about at one point is that we think the numbers are that actually, it would actually save money for the city to do some of the projects that we're taking a look at. So it's not even just that it's at a net cost to the city, although it might end up being like that. But that, we think there's opportunity there, and we, again, believe that we have the right partners that are experts in this and are doing the analysis. So. And sometimes known as kind of the biggest star in the city is our own Andy Kenyon, who around tulip time in particular seems to be a video sensation style. I'm wondering about, apparently YouTube, there, there's an ability to make money on number of hits or anything. I probably should check with Mary Ann to find out if, if there's a fundraiser there. So. Andy, in all seriousness, thanks for joining us tonight, and we look forward to your presentation.
Good. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thanks, and counsel for having me tonight. Pleasure to be here to talk about Parks and Recreation. Overall, just starting to say, I think we're, we're pretty, from year to year, we're pretty, pretty well the same this year as we were last year. Not, not a ton of crazy things in the budget. We do, however, have quite a few MCIF projects coming up. Matt, I think, touched on them last night a little bit. So we're really excited about that. Some stuff's been on the books for a while, and it's finally coming to be our turn to get some of those done. In particular, that first bullet, I talk about park improvements, lighting updates at Mad Urban Sports Complex and Riverview Park. It's not on the bullet, but I know that's in the MCIF. These are gonna be switchovers from our giant fifteen-hundred to two-thousand watt metal halide lamps that light our fields, our athletic fields, to LED lights, which will basically cut our bills in energy consumption right in half, which will be outstanding. You may have seen the video of some of our forestry staff taking down the poles at Riverview Park a few weeks ago. So that was kind of the start of it. And at Mad Urban, we won't probably have to take down the poles. We're not a hundred percent sure of all of them, but we think they'll stay and just replace the heads. So that project is being developed right now, and we're really excited about that happening. If you've been out there on a Thursday night or Friday night to play softball or watch somebody play softball, you can hear, hear the familiar hum of the ballasts that are quite loud, and that will all go away once these LED lights get in place, and it'll be much better. We're really excited about it. Also included is some paving around our Parks Building and our campus, as we call it now, since we brought the Recreation Team over about a year and a half ago, two years ago. That road that leads from Twenty-Fourth Street basically to the cemetery is in pretty, much disrepair and needs to be replaced. So we'll be working on having that being repaved this coming year. And then some new informational signage at Venerati Farm. The signage went into that park right around the time when I started with the city. So it's been just about twenty years that the signage there has been there. I went around with Alex from our GIS Department earlier last fall and late summer, and we kind of mapped out the park and picked some spots out for some new signage. And I'm hopeful to work with Outdoor Discovery Center on that. We worked with them before when the signs went in, and we're excited about having some new signage there to match the beautiful new dog park on the Twenty-Fourth Street side. I'll add that too. Yep, there you go. Replacement of park benches at various parks. You all are familiar with our wooden, wooden slatted benches we have around town, particularly in downtown corridor. Some of those benches are old. We replace them from time to time. But every third year, we pull them in and they get a whole facelift. So we sand them down and restain them. So we get a lot of years out of them, but some of them are to the point where they need to be replaced. And those are quite expensive, fifteen-hundred to two-thousand dollars a bench. So we have to budget for it this way. We're excited to have that done as well. The third one there is purchase of some battery-operated small engine equipment for the cemetery. If you remember back, which you probably don't, but last year, we started picking off some small engine equipment within our budget to change over from gasoline-powered to electric and, or battery-operated, excuse me, equipment. So we were kind of testing it out. We had really good success, not only with some of the, the blowers that we purchased. We have some, in some of our- in some of our facilities too, here at City Hall, at the Police Department. We also have some battery powered vacuum cleaners that we utilize at different locations. And I know the facility maintenance staff at the Police Department really loves it. He can go anywhere he wants in the entire building and do all the vacuuming and cleanup that they need to do and not be hooked onto an electrical cord. So, that's been really great. And as well here, like in City Hall, we have a, if we ever get back to having, which we will, some festivities where we have things all over the ground we need to clean up with blowers. We can bring it inside and use it because it's not gas powered. So, that's really handy. The cemetery uses chainsaws from time to time and also hedge trimmers all the time. So, they're going to kind of be our guinea pigs on that. It won't be wholesale chainsaws like on our forestry crew, but this is something they use on a less regular basis as our tree crew. So, we're going to give it a shot and see how it goes. We're pretty excited about that. The LED parking lot lights at City Hall, about half of them now are LED. We are looking to replace the other half with LED lights as well. They'll match all of the ring of fire lights that you see at Centennial and also in the parking lot. A little note about the LED lights here, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to qualify for some rebates from the Board of Public Works with those. I've been working with a group from SEMCO Energy and the BPW for about the last six months to study, this is a little off topic, but study our energy consumption in some of our facilities. We did that when we had the Snyder Electric Project. And now we're kind of doing a pulse check on that to see how we're doing and what we can do better. So, we're looking at City Hall, the Police Department, Parks and Rec Building, and the Civic Center. And so far, we've been starting to graph all of our usage. And along the way, we've been able to tweak things like our schedules. We've pulled in more outside air in the winter months when we need to cool the building instead of firing up our water coolers and things like that. So, we're already starting to see some of that, but we're trying to make it even better. So, probably six months from now, we'll be able to report back in a study session of our findings. And it'll be interesting to see how well we're doing. And we are doing very well, by the way. So, it's outstanding. And then also, the last one there is continue on our playground replacement program. Moran Park is one that we've highlighted. We've done Washington School Green, which was kind of an add. We took down the one the school had and added that one. Lakeview Park. And then Rosa Parks Green got replaced. So, we're just picking our way through the playgrounds that are, you know, 25 years old. And Moran Park is going to get some upgrades this summer and we're going to look at that playground program. Hopefully, we'll be able to apply for our grant program that we did last year, which helped us leverage some of our funds that we have in the MCIF to get a bigger playground than what we normally would have been able to afford otherwise. So, we'll be doing that probably at the end of the year. So, those are my highlights. Happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Questions from council members?
I did ask you a question about the Collin Park repainting, which you answered, but I think it's good for everyone to know.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. So, it just so happens today, we were down at Collin Park looking at some boardwalk and Nikki had asked me about the painting of the railings back, I don't know, it's probably been five or six years ago when we painted the railings at Collin Park. They need it again. And we're going to attempt to do it in-house this time. And we're going to start picking that off this spring when the weather and the temperature gets to be higher. So, we'll take it a section at a time and see what we can do. Yep.
Yeah. I'm glad to see that you're switching to some of the battery operated small engine stuff. I did that personally at home. Absolutely love it. It's great. I was worried it wasn't going to last long enough and it may not for your crews that are out there all day long, but we've had great success with it. And as somebody who occasionally films videos in the city parks, it's going to be awfully nice to have those quiet, those trimmers and blowers that are a lot quieter than the gas powered ones in the background. And thank you for charting and graphing all of the energy savings with the things that you're doing because I think that that's something that's going to fit well in with Community Energy Plan.
For sure.
That we're able to show the public what we're doing as a community for that so that that can be then reflected back to our residents to say, hey, you mean I can save money doing those kinds of things too? So, thank you for taking the lead on that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Quincy.
Couple of things. Flowers look awesome.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Quincy. Yes.
Every so often, I go visit a couple of friends out at the cemetery. And so, I end up going over to the greenhouse and peeking in and seeing what's going on in there. So, those probably, I don't know if those got picked out in a yard somewhere or if those got picked out in the greenhouse.
Not your yard, not my yard. Those were from the greenhouse. So, our greenhouse staff, our operator and all of our staff that works there do an awesome, awesome job of that. And they're spoiling us rotten with their ability to make things beautiful. So, it's great.
Yeah, pretty awesome. Then you were volunteered for a new outfit. I don't know if you heard about that yet.
Not shocked, no.
And then, could you speak a little bit about the collaboration with ODC? How we, how that's looking?
Yeah. It's going really well. We have a great relationship with the ODC. As you know, with DeGraff Nature Center, that continues to blossom and grow. And it's starting to fold into other things like our collaboration at Window on the Waterfront with the playground they're planning there. And things like that are great. We are constantly talking to them about, like the signage I mentioned, how they can help us with that. We're looking at another, some of their staff members are helping us with other sustainable things that we're able to do within our park systems as well as citywide. And they're volunteering to help do that work and help us along the way. So, it's been, it's been absolutely awesome. And I'm really happy that we have the collaboration we do.
Cool. So, you think it's been, it's more than what was anticipated?
Oh, I think so. Yeah. I think the DeGraff was a great, I don't even want to say it's a test, but it was, it was a good start for us. And it just shows what, when we put two things together, how we can, how we can get a lot of things done together. And it's been a great relationship.
Cool. Great. Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, Row.
Where did we end up with the other greenhouse?
It's so, the other greenhouse is going to have to be, continue to be studied. We're just about done with the master plan for Centennial Park. That should be coming to council relatively soon, within the next couple of months, months, I would imagine. And that'll give us some direction on whether or not the greenhouse fits into Centennial Park is, was one of the, one of the ideas and thoughts, what locations that it may fit. Once that gets kind of out there and decided, then it'll come to the Historic District Commission for the discussion on what's appropriate for that site and the buildings and things like that. And then ultimately to council.
Okay.
So, it's still in the works.
All right.
Thanks, bud.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
Nice.
Glad everybody else did.
Nice.
He asked that question just so he could do that line.
You need to get T-shirts with that.
Anyone else? Great. Thank you, Andy. And thank all of your folks too. I'm glad Quincy brought it up. The city looks spectacular. It really does.
I really agree. So, thank you so much.
So, while Andy does the spray down, I just want to recognize a few things. And it really calls out Andy and his team. But I'm going to turn it back on you and it calls out council decisions. I'm in a couple of different ways. So, bear with me. One, I know that some of you really like it when I refer back to the Moses study. And one of the things that the Moses study talked about is investing in our teams and taking a look at our staffing levels. And this is an area where we absolutely did that, but you supported it. So, just a reminder of a few things that have happened over the last three years. Not only did we do the relationship with the ODC, but also we folded the facilities function that used to be decentralized into the team at Parks and Rec. So, really, we probably should say Parks and Rec and facilities. And let me tell you, the payback that we're getting on that in different ways is pretty phenomenal. But you invested in that. You invested in allowing some more of a management team to be built under Andy that not only meant that we're getting more things done, but it's also freed up Andy so that he can kind of be that proactive, like look into the future and really do some of the, some of the investments and make Hey Bud videos to, no, not really, but, you know.
Do you get hours?
Yeah, no, no, it's fun. It was, it was more than worth its time. I can't tell you how much the payback that you guys decided to make in that has, has come back to us. It's fix it first, which was a very strong theme that you had because we kind of fell behind for a while. And you're, I hope that you're seeing it in all of our facilities, parks and our buildings. Very proactive. But I think you also, like, if you look at the highlights that Andy just talked about, the other thing that's happening is our focus on sustainability. And I always talk about sustainability. I know about our Community Energy Plan and I know about the energy and the focus that's being put on us and that we have there. And that's important. But that's just a component of a larger sustainability focus that we have. And if you listen to what Andy just talked about, I mean, he really didn't talk about it in front. He just kind of hit, I don't know how many legs of sustainability and just the way that they're doing things. And it reflects a success that we've had that started at one point with a sustainability committee because that's all that we had. And I think what you've seen is we've successfully integrated it, operationalized it, and it's because you guys invested in it. So, even though we have a sustainability project manager and assistant city manager position, it's been operationalized in how Andy does his, does his work. So, kudos to him, but kudos to you guys for seeing that, making that a priority. We've invested in it. And hopefully, you just got a little bit of a glimpse tonight of how that continues to provide payback to the community.
Fantastic. Thank you. Oh, can we take a short break before we head on with Mr. Vanderplu? Because I know he's going to be very brief. He's got a history of that. But I think I've gotten a word from a couple of council members. We'll do a five minute break. Mr. Vanderplu, good to see you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Mark Vanderplu, CNS Department. Very happy to be here with you tonight. I will try to keep my remarks brief. It seems I have a reputation of going long-winded. And I will try to nip that in the bud. So, I've got just a handful of items for you tonight. And the first one is Udo, 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 Udo. Can you say Udo? So, no. I'm sure you've all heard, the Planning Commission held their final public hearing on the Udo Tuesday night. And they are, have passed a recommendation to City Council in regards to the entire Udo process. So, that will be coming to council in the near future. I think that the date and the time is still being worked out for that. So, that will be on your plate in the near future. So, but this bullet item is really to anticipating City Council's approval of the Udo or hoping that you approve the Udo at some time, but confident that you will be approving it in the future here. And kind of unrolling a marketing and educational efforts to go along with that. So, we fully understand this is a, this is, it has been a huge undertaking. There's a lot of changes, a lot of wonderful changes. But the community and the many different stakeholders out there in the community, we know that a lot of them have been along and they understand what's going on. But there's a lot of people who do not understand yet. So, we're, we're fully cognizant that we, we need to do educational efforts to get to them. So, what am I kind of talking about? So, we're, we're anticipating doing a more online kind of rollout of material, of materials, getting that out there, doing some direct mailers. We have to kind of fully scope that out yet, but that's certainly something that we can do. But probably going to pay a big, big attention to doing some virtual and also hopefully some in-person meetings should some room restrictions alleviate a little bit. And being able to talk with our stakeholders. And I'm kind of talking about, you know, realtors, developers, Chamber of Commerce folks, business groups, but financial folks also, just kind of letting them all know, what are the big changes in here? But what are, what are really the opportunities and the great things that can lead to a better development in the city? But of course, also reaching out again with a sustained effort to the general public and the homeowners and so forth. So, that's, that's going to be a big undertaking. And we were rolling up our sleeves and kind of scoping out what that process and effort should be. But we're really kind of thinking that's, that's going to be starting, assuming, you know, whenever City Council approves Udo. And we'll get into that. So,
And Mark, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm assuming that even prior to that, there's going to be educational efforts for seven of the nine of us at least that are, that are sitting up here at the dais. Because Counselor Raymond and I have been spending countless hours going over the minutia. You and your staff put together a phenomenal 27-page executive summary of the 300-plus pages of the Udo. But there's a lot there. And I know that, I know that the other council members that are up here have not had near the exposure to what the final draft is, but also the process of how we got there, you know, where it was six months or a year ago versus where it is now. I'm saying this, I think I'm saying it to somebody who knows, has already got plans in the works for that, but I just kind of want to make that, that statement. And probably more for the council members that are up here, that I'm sure that there's going to be an educational effort that's coming for them as well as to, as to what's there and what the, and what the issues have been and what the questions have been.
Yeah. As Mark indicated, we're looking at right now, hopefully, as I indicated last night, we're trying to figure out a date to put this on a study session. And the Udo, we anticipate that that would be the item for a study session, not trying to do multiple things. So, we're trying to nail down a date that would work with a consultant. So, what we're able to nail down there has other implications. But at, at the very minimum, the thought is we'll have a study session. And then at the end of that study session, we'll kind of take, take a sense of council and see, are we ready then to do what would be a two-step process, which gives you two, you know, looks at it in the regular council session before it would get to the point of acting on it? Or would you want additional education before we'd even put it on the regular council process? So, just so you know, that's kind of the process that we're looking at, which I think gives you more than enough time and also ability to say, okay, are we comfortable with, or is there more discussion or more presentation or more education that we want before you put it into that process? So, just to be clear, that's kind of what we're looking at. So, we'll be looking at that first date and trying to communicate that as soon as we can nail, again, down that study session is where it would begin.
Okay. And Dave, did you have a question?
Yeah. Keith, to that point, I'm hoping that when this becomes available, we will have enough time beforehand. I mean, if there's a 27-page executive summary, I don't know how fast you all read, but I'm going to need a fair amount of time to digest all of that stuff. So,
Is that, the summary's available publicly now, right?
Yeah. So, one of the things that we're going to do regardless of when we find a date and all that kind of stuff, is I'm going to ask, and we were planning on doing this, it just got, you know, through the action of the Planning Commission this week, is I'm going to ask Mark either directly or through, through my office probably, is send you what was approved by council regardless tomorrow.
Commission.
And I probably won't do it through my council communication. We'll just give you basically the document and then the executive summary and anything else that Mark thinks would be beneficial for you. So, Dave, as you said, you can kind of start your review process early. It's not like you have to wait until, oh, we schedule a study session and it's in the packet at that point.
And one thing great about the Udo document itself, Dave, it's got a lot of pictures. So, it's not, it's not 300 pages of dense text.
The budget.
Lots of, lots of pictures, lots of charts. It's a, it's a beautiful, actually, it's a beautiful document. It really is. It's a, it's a joy to read, which I can't believe I would ever say about a zoning and planning document. It's a, it's a joy to read, which I, I can't believe I would ever say about a zoning and planning document, but it actually is. It's a, it's a, it's a wonderfully done, very well, very well-designed and easy-to-use document. I think you're going to be really impressed with that. Scott, you had something?
Yeah, so I, I don't, it's, I don't think it's intended to be, to offend any of us, but certainly many of us have been following this process. And been watching, listening, watching the videos that have been provided, engaged. Some of us were part of the system when it first started, right? So to say seven of us need to be, let me finish.
Oh, sure. No, I, I just want to say, I didn't mean that at all. I just want, I just want to make sure everybody's up to speed.
I don't think there was an intention to do that. But I think hearing people say that a lot of people know about what's going on, but there's a lot of people don't know what's going on. But I would say there, there are quite a few people engaged in this and it's reflective in the emails that we're receiving as council members and the phone calls we're receiving. So I would say that there are a lot of people engaged. And I don't think there should be an assumption, and what I'm hearing is that this council is just going to pass Udo as it's presented, because that's what I'm hearing, is that you're going to be happy with it and you're going to just kind of, we're going to go to the next stage of, of this process. So while I know this is, this is dealing with budget issues and department, I, I just want to make sure that we, we, we take it slow, methodically, because things have been brought up and things have been changed because people brought issues to you, your department and to planning commissioners, and things have been changed. So I anticipate maybe there will be more changes before this is over with. So please, just understand, there's a lot of people still engaged in this process.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what my intent was, Scott.
So in the, the 27-page executive summary, I'm sorry, the 27-page executive summary is kind of an oxymoron. So we can try to make it like a 12-pager if, if that would be beneficial. But it does get into some of the things, Scott. So it, it, it tries to summarize, you know, a 325-page ordinance and, and trying to do it well, trying to, to hit everything, but not go too in-depth. But we also do kind of reflect on or kind of list out the main topics that, that got a lot of attention from the general public. Okay, so we know what we're talking about there. The, the density discussions in the LDR, proposed LDR district, the TNR district, downtown parking and so forth. And, and there's several other ones. And, and the Planning Commission and the staff had that listed out in the report and that will be shared with City Council too. So, and in all, in all honesty, those were the, probably the major focal points that, that brought most interest from the general public and the business community too. So we're, we tried to overlay those for everybody's focus.
Mike?
I'm going to be one that says I purposely stayed away for a couple of different reasons. One, for the governance side of things. And second of all, because I didn't want my head clouded with everything. I knew you were going to go through, the Planning Commission was going to go through umpteen different changes. So I appreciate the fact that we're going to have some education. It's not going to be brand new to me. I, I wasn't totally ignorant to the whole thing. I did get some things, but I intentionally did not watch it in depth. Now, do we have a timeframe that this has to be done? Okay.
No.
So I'm just going to throw this out there, and it's probably been said 100 times before, but I'm just going to throw this out there. Planning Commission did a hell of a job. They endured a lot. The number of emails and things that we've got, Scott's absolutely correct. We've got a lot of community engagement, probably right up there with the trash, single waste hauler and, and things like that.
Almost, almost.
Well, and I'm, I'm not trying to be flippant there, but there are certain things that trip people's triggers. Considering the constraints that we have, I, I'm just going to throw this out there that once we have the ability to have a meeting again with people available, that may not be a bad idea, as opposed to trying to do something virtually or bits and pieces. I'm just, I'm one voice, I'm one concern, I'm stating one thing. But that's, the pulse that I have gotten from the people that have contacted me, let's take that away, take that argument away and say, okay, we know this is a big deal. We're not taking it lightly. I, I want to make that very blunt and honest. We're not taking this lightly. But I also want to have it have a fair chance. And there can't be any arguments that we didn't have a chance to do this, we didn't have a chance to do that. I'm looking forward to the study session where you bring it to us. But before it gets progressed too much further, we really need to be able to engage the public more. Planning, again, nothing against Planning Commission. They did, they had to deal with what they had to deal with and they did a yeoman's job on that, along with staff trying to do that. It's now come up to the next level. We're not any better, we're not any worse. But I'm just asking for my constituents and the people that are ultimately going to, the nine of us ultimately making that decision, I hope it before election time, that we have a really good chance to hear the public by any means. Personally is, is typically better, the fact that we have the emails and things like that. But I think it's better for us to be able to see the body language, to be able to, to hear, see, feel, whatever the case may be. So I'm, I'm just throwing it out. I'm looking forward to the study sessions. I'm looking forward to the information. So Keith is going to get angry with me.
So a few changes, and I just want to clarify and, and I, I hope. So the first step is a study session. And I think there's an element where you probably want to at least have the download of information of what's coming before you. And of course, all of your meetings are public, right? And quite frankly, the Planning Commission has been meeting virtually. So I, I know that we have limitations here, but they're going to be able to come in. But I think it's important, and that's why I think the study session is the first step, for you guys to get information. Where we go from there is going to be led by you. Now, at some point, there needs to be a step, right? Where it does get onto a regular agenda and that's a two-step process. So the public and all your meetings has a chance to continue to be engaged. And we have more possibilities for engagement. As you guys all noticed, they're engaging, which is fantastic. But the first step that we're going to do is a study session where it's the only item on the study session. And I think it's vital that we download to you so that even in the feedback that you're going to get from the community, that there's an element where you know what the feedback's about, instead of just being a little bit in a vacuum at different levels.
I couldn't agree with you more, Keith. And I was not talking about the study session. I was talking about the progression after that.
Yep, and you guys are going to make the call of when you're ready and comfortable to move it from a study session-type format onto council. And remember, it's a two-step process at the least at council.
Right. Just a, just a suggestion.
Yep.
Okay. Scott?
So just to clarify one thing, as Councilman Trutree brought up, governance structure. I respected that completely. Did not engage with the Planning Commission, did not engage with the public on their questions, generally speaking. Refer them back to the Planning Commission documents that are online, available to watch the videos. But I've been listening. I've been listening to them and I've been listening through the emails and the correspondence that we received. But I've also been engaged myself in watching the videos and watching, reading the documents online, the draft documents. And I'd been engaged a year and a half prior to that as a board planning commissioner myself. So I just want to make sure that everyone here understands I've not violated the governance structure at all. I, I want to be very respectful of that. But many of us have some knowledge about what has been taking place and some of the changes that have taken place through this process. So I just want to make sure that's well-known.
Great. Thank, yeah, thanks for that, that discussion and I think, I think staff will do a great job with that and have passed his prologue. I don't think that there's going to be any shortage of public input in this. The, the, the public has been, been very active in communicating to the Planning Commission. And I think that we can expect that moving forward as well. I don't think that there'll be any, and, any loss of, of public engagement with us. So.
I appreciate that. Just some of the comments that there was frustration trying to get through and things like that. I want to try to avoid that as much as possible. That's, that's the point of mine. Okay?
Yep, get it exactly. Mark?
Very good. Bullet item number two is our recycling cart marketing and educational efforts. So if you haven't noticed, there's been a lot of recycling carts hitting the streets and the great blue color and that great orange at top to it. So just real quickly to, to give you an update with some of the timing with that too. So you, I'm, I'm sure you, hopefully you all have gotten your carts and you've read diligently, read the little bag of information that, there you go.
I, I prefer the other version of that one, Scott.
So. So the, the, some of the marketing efforts that have occurred so far is, is that going out there? As well as the stuff that, that was in the collateral bag that attached to the carts as they're rolled out. We're going to start getting into, starting in June through the remainder of this calendar year, picking up kind of a pace of getting out a marketing efforts to people. It's critically important for the first part of a cart rollout program like this in the first six months or whatever to, to educate people and do it repeatedly to make sure that they, they get it and they understand it and, and they, and they fully know what they need to do. So we, we intend to kind of hit that hard, kind of through the end of this calendar year and then kind of taper off with that. So, so here again, with the recycling carts, the week of May 3 is when we're actually, those carts are going to go live, so to say, and everybody's going to have to check if they're an A week or a B week and get your carts out there loaded with, with recyclables. So that's what we've got going with that. Bullet, bullet item number three is a non-motorized transportation plan. And this is a, a joint project that we intend to do with Transportation Services Department. So right now, we do have a bike and pedestrian plan and it is woefully dated. It's, uh, goes back to 2006 and yours truly wrote that plan. And it was kind of a quick and dirty plan because we had to get it up in, in, online in, in a real quick time period. So 15-year-old plan, we really feel that we need to get that buffed up and redone. So we intend to do that with Brian and his crew. So. Next item is neighborhood visioning plan or plans. You might be thinking, what is this? So as you, you all know, the waterfront Holland visioning process did a wonderful job for those areas that were really kind of in, in the, the geographic areas that, that encapsulated, okay? The waterfront area is really kind of stretching from the Hines area all the way along, all the way up to the Energy Park, okay? So, but we're in, in kind of looking at those plans, we have realized there are some areas close to where we studied with waterfront Holland that probably would be, would benefit a lot from just taking a, a closer look at them and doing some visioning. And you might be thinking, Mark, what are you talking about? What are you talking about? So one area that we really would like to take a look at is kind of the South Shore Village, Collin Park neighborhood. Think of DeBoer Bakery area in there. And so it's, it's, it's close to waterfront Holland and we see, we get a lot of, we use the term tire kickers. There's a lot of people that are interested in that neighborhood and a lot of great opportunities in there. But we think it would be very beneficial to engage with the neighborhood and kind of do a visioning process much, much, much more pared down than waterfront Holland. Okay, we're not even talking remotely that close. But, but get in and do a visioning project. So we sincerely hope to be able to do that this coming year. And then lastly is doing a remodeling of the CNS office suite. It's kind of hard to believe that it's 24 years ago now since we moved back into this building. I remember moving back in in 97. We still have the original carpet upstairs and it's, it's, it needs a refresh. So we're working with GMB right now and, and Matt is, is, has really been helping Tricia and I in, in our department. We're getting feedback from them. So, but we, we really hope to be able to do a refresh project later this fall and to bring that back up to snuff. And, and if you're thinking about, well, what's it going to look like? It's probably going to look very similar to what the city manager's office suite looks like. So. And just real, and just real quickly, from the January time that I did this, there was one item I talked about that we might be wanting to do a master plan refresh. That has slipped off from the palate, so to say, for this coming fiscal year. And I think that Planning Commissioners, maybe Lynn and Nathan might go, oh, okay. We're happy to have a down year for a little bit. But we, we do intend or, or kind of have our sights set on the next fiscal year to come in and, and to do that. So. And I would probably be remiss to, 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 to not say that housing developments are continuing to come in. And maybe some of you, certainly Nathan and Lynn know because you're on the Planning Commission. This past Tuesday, we had a public hearing with, with a developer coming in for the northeast corner of 24th Street and Waverly. And I think it's called Home Flats at 24th and Waverly or some, something like that. But 191 apartments and got tabled at the Planning Commission. There's still some issues or some, some things being worked into. But we, we really anticipate that that probably, hopefully will be approved during the May Planning Commission meeting. And there are other developments kind of in that same area that are, are kind of in, still in the private planning process, but will be coming out soon too. One of those being Rest Haven, the Farmstead proper, or project that they have just down the street from this last one. They probably will be coming into the Planning Commission in May or June. And they have over 200 dwelling units there for the, for the Rest Haven folks in, in that kind of a demographic. But things are going to start heating up again with, with the housing development sector. So I just wanted to quickly mention that also. So, thank you.
Questions for Mark? Comments? Yeah, Dave?
Two questions. One, I'm curious about how our capacity for inspection, rental inspection, that sort of thing is, is that still in a good shape?
Yes, yes, it is. Yep.
I can't remember now. Shame on me. Did Juan retire or is he, he, he did, right?
Juan did retire about this time last month. We do have a replacement. And Leo and I, for the life of me, I, I don't remember his last name, but a very, very capable individual and stepping into kind of the vacancy that was, that was had there with Juan's retirement. But no, we're, we're at full, full capacity. I think that you probably know that we, we have backed off. In the time of COVID, we really backed off a lot on doing rental inspections just because, yeah, it, it wouldn't be good to be getting into people's dwelling units. But, you know, as soon as things become good and proper for us to be, you know, fully getting into the rental inspections again, we will be doing that. But I, we do have a capacity, I think adequate capacity in the rental housing. So as far as construction services, we did hire on another part-time building inspector, which has been very good. The individual's helping a lot, out a lot with kind of some of the smaller construction projects, which is really freeing up Nate and Dan's time to do a lot of the bigger projects because we got apartment complexes, we got industrial things coming in. So that, you know, it's, we're going to have a robust year with development too. So.
Yeah, okay. And one other question in, in terms of capacity also. And I know that with this Udo project, hopefully coming to a conclusion, it'll free you up to breathe a little bit.
Yes.
Probably do some other things. And I'm asking this question, I guess, not so much in terms of immediate effect, but looking down the road, three to five years or whatever, as more projects come to you and your, your department for oversight and, and looking at and so forth, as well as some of the things that we've talked about, like the north downtown area and all of the visioning and thinking about that. You know, I, I guess my, my overall question is. Um you know, I I I guess my my overall question is what your sense is in terms of the planning department's capacity to deal with all of that stuff. Coming from a context years ago, and Michael will remember this too, of charrettes and large, large processes of uh visioning and dreaming and contextualizing uh development and so forth, not that that's the standard that we always have to use, but um what's your sense of your department's ability to handle what's hoped is an increasing amount of that kind of activity? And I don't mean to put you on the spot with your boss right here, but.
No, that that's that's a it's a really good and a fair question. So, yeah, I mean, there's no doubt about it. I mean, I I remember the years when we had a lot of planners, planner types walking around the building here, you know? Greg Robinson was a planner, you know, Phil Meyer, myself, Joel Dye. Um I'm probably missing somebody else too, and we and we were all steeped in the planning um kind of profession. And you know, you know, the folks that we got upstairs now. It's it's myself and and Jenna and we got Mark Cornelis at halftime. So uh we have less people. I would like to say though that we're 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 pretty darn nimble and we can move quickly. Um we we have learned and very comfortable working with consultants and we have groomed some some consultants and and I'm really kind of specifically thinking about like uh uh Hari Yekon and Nick Rolinski. We work very well with them. And uh you know, if there's opportunities that come along in the future that we can pull on on them or or other kind of uh design profession or planning types, um I I don't think that we'd be reluctant to do that. So um I think consultants can kind of play a very good role too if in in and we do have a good bench of those people um, you know, in in the Holland area too to draw on. So I I feel comfortable with that. You know, so your timeframe was out, you know, three to five years and and I'm turning fifty-seven this year too, so I'm I'm starting to think that.
You're a young lad.
No, I don't have any big announcement, but I, you know, it's, yeah, I mean, it's something to think, you know, you know, to be thinking about, but I I'm very confident, you know, of where we are right now and uh I think we can go from there.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, your candor, and I hate the term new normal, um but it sounds as though you've evolved into an operational uh model that uses the best of what you've got and resources that are available as well, so.
Yes.
I just have always put a lot of importance on the impact and the effectiveness of that planning process and just want to make sure that I at least verbalize that uh support and attention to that, so. Thank you both of you for being attentive to that and being on top of it, so thank you.
Yeah, and if I could, Dave, just to reiterate some of that, Mark spoke well to that. It's a conversation that we 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 do somewhat rigorously have. A couple of things that I help, I think, help ba- balance that too. You know, I what I was gonna say at the end of this is if you take a look at all the things that he has in highlights, um a lot of them aren't even the core of what the third floor does.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And we've gone through an extended period um through a variety of different things. COVID, master plan transitioned right into waterfront Holland, transitioned right into Udo. Like, we've had two or three of those things, it seems like, going on constantly forever.
It's been busy.
Um s- but I'm also gonna so I think getting to a year where where I strongly support, let's not do master plan next year. Right? We've had some other discussions too about, there's some stuff that we want to talk to you about before we start a process, there's some stuff we want to talk to you about, for example, about questions in the historic district. Um but taking on one of those big things, we I think it's really important that we get back to kind of the core and oh, by the way, as Mark said, we're as busy as we ever have with projects that are coming to us. Um and I'm really looking for, but I can only imagine that's a sliver of how much Mark and his team upstairs is looking forward to just doing that and then kind of on the other side of the building, just doing the property code rental inspections and just the inspections because when they plan it and approve it, when it gets through planning commission, well, then it gets built and then the other side of the building is involved. We've also made some changes too and are making in process and changes which I think are helpful. And one of those is the economic development sustainability in the Assistant City Managers' Office, which kind of a name that Mark mentioned is a kind of a nod to the way that it way, way, way used to be with Greg Robinson, uh because in Ryan Kilpatrick, you also have another planner, right? But you also have the ability that some of the responsibilities that Mark is supervising, quite frankly, as I said last night, he's still got some of those responsibilities until that Ryan position grows in, is taking off of Mark's plate too, so we can kind of do a focus there. Um so I think that's good and helps in the direction that I agree with you on. And then the final thing, um which doesn't lower the amount of kind of those big planning in the charrettes, but it's kind of like if you think back to the north downtown vision and kind of that that framework thinking that we went through. And one of the themes that I think we had there was that there's a little bit of an element where we're closer to the implementation phase than we're into the visioning phase, which, don't get me wrong, the planning is still really important, but we're probably for a period of time while we've got some smaller kind of areas, as Mark said, it's not like the intensity of what we did with waterfront Holland and the lift and the time that that took. So um we're still monitoring it really closely. What I keep telling Mark is consultants on the planning side and especially like if we need need more inspectors, we don't want to slow down building projects because we can't do the inspections. So we've absolutely added some contracting and some part-time people because that's the last thing we want to do is to slow down people that are trying to build things that we've approved because we say they fit. So I hear you, I'm not pushing back on you, but I wanted to go through kind of that list of things that we talk about because we think those are kind of other creative ways that we're also lessening some of that other stuff and making sure we're doing those very important core things.
Yeah, that's helpful in understanding where the department is, so thanks for that.
You bet.
Nikki, you had a comment to make?
Yeah, I do, and if you're gonna give him pushback, you're really gonna pushback on this. Because apparently I'm not as progressive as I like to think I am. And I just, there's um Holland, I mean, I hope we're thinking of, it is a wonderful place to raise a family, to retire, to be born into, um and it's it's just seems develop, develop, develop. And I get concerned because the part of that, and I'm glad to see, at least with non-motorized transportation, you're working with um Brian, because Holland is only so big and there are only so many roads and they can only be so wide and we're not quite into riding our bikes like Mark Cornelis does everywhere. You know, we're not uh and so in the, you know, I know we plan for the future, but a hundred and ninety-one units is a lot and then right next to it and then the part to the north. And I just hope as we we don't want to give up our green spaces, we don't want to give up what makes Holland, I mean, we we have this amazing geography and I um so I get concerned and I I see congestion and I see and I think, okay, I know I'm getting older, you know, it didn't used to be this way. But I I do think you can have too many people in one spot. And if that's the way we're going and if if there are too many people in the world and we need to go more urban, okay, but I I don't know that. I don't know.
And the check on that always is the master plan. So it's not like we're building in places that um the 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 roads and the infrastructure weren't there for these types of projects that we mentioned. You know, they have been laying there and for years we've said, okay, it's there, ready for development. We just are in a market right now where there is that interest to be here. So we've kind of been preparing for it for a long time. I get it, right? It just seems like, wow, there's a lot of change all at the same time, but yeah, we've been preparing for it, so it fits within those things. But I get it. It's it it, you know, if it was all kind of a little bit more, could you schedule this stuff, Mark? I mean.
Oh, I'll get on that.
Okay, good.
Okay, I said my piece. Thank you.
Yeah, Quincy.
Um some time ago, we talked about collaboration with um other communities to get inspectors and possibly other uh employees. How, where is that at? Have we looked at that at all or got any info on that?
Yeah, it's kind of always in play and um kind of comes and goes, um help in both directions, so.
Yes.
We can go into detail on that, but the answer, the short answer is yes, always.
Yeah. We continue to uh to work closely with our our other local governments, you know, as far as like trade inspections and so forth. And like we we do mechanical and plumbing inspections for the city of Zealand, okay? We work very closely with Holland Township back and forth and uh good agreements with them and kind of building that that local resiliency and 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 providing those inspections. And uh we're, yeah, we always look for opportunities and uh um and we'll we'll continue to always do that. Sometimes it's nice to have just your own people on staff being able to do the job too and uh but yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's kind of another one of, if Mark could just schedule kind of a consistent amount all the time, then we could staff it exactly right. That's why these partnerships are important, more so because of the volatility of things.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so so he does, he and Tricia do a great job and it's really just a reflection because we have good partnerships with our our neighboring units.
Cool.
Any other questions, comments for Mark? Great, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
That was, I think that was exactly five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right on the mark.
Yeah, why don't we? And we'll make up some time, Ricky, but we'll get you out of here. Welcome to see you.
Thank you.
Oh, don't forget to sanitize.
Oh, my goodness. They say it's my one job, Ricky, to sanitize and the changes and I forgot. Thank you. He reminded me of that when I was back from vacation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ricky.
Good evening. So you want me to dive in? First, I want to say thank you. First of all, it's nice to see all of you. This is my first in-person meeting with more than two or three people, so this is cool. Um and I also want to really just say thank you to the city for your financial support over the years. Um as you've seen our budget, we are a very tight ship and um your contribution makes a huge difference to our bottom line, so really grateful for that. Um so the first bullet that you see there is our projection of increased attendance and program revenue and sponsorship income. We're projecting a twenty-seven percent increase from last year's budget in attendance. Uh this is based on better exhibit planning, which allows us to do more effective promotion of exhibits and events as well as our overall programs, um where we expect a hundred and thirty-three percent increase, which I know sounds huge, but we've been growing our programs a lot despite the pandemic and we have a brand-new education and outreach manager who's already scheduled many more programs going forward. So we're really excited about those things that are in the in the uh loop and on the calendar. Our corporate sponsorship opportunities have expanded and along with the better planning and sponsorship promotion, we expect a twenty percent increase there uh in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand. The other thing we've done that affects our revenue is um we've reduced the amount of investment withdrawals we're planning to take and that's for gallery and educational programming as we've been able to reduce some of our expenses this current year and that comes to a forty percent reduction. Post-pandemic, we have plans to return to our regular fundraising events, uh the very popular trivia night that we've done for a number of years. And our more new uh in-person event is Museum on Tap. Uh we had it one year and we were going to do it this past January, but obviously that fell apart, but we hope to bring those back on. And then we have plans for additional programs as well. Um we're launching our first one, actually, the end of this fiscal year on May twentieth, hosted by Mayor Box. Um and full disclosure, tickets are on sale now. It's a really fun event, preserving our stories, the sweet history of the Holland Peanuts Store. And these combined uh programs or fundraisers we anticipate will increase ninety-five percent in our revenue or close to thirty-nine thousand in um additional revenue this year. On the expense side, um personnel expenses are budgeted to remain the same from previous years uh from last year. This is primarily due to a delay in replacing those who left uh from attrition. And I do want to point out, we did not have to furlough or lay off any of our staff even though we were closed for four months. And that is because we've been able to control a lot of our expenses and we got two PPP loans um from the federal government. The Armory has a water, the Armory, the one building that is not owned by the city that the museum runs, um has a water infiltration issue. It's had it for some time. We have not been able to figure out what the cause of it was. Uh it took some time to identify that and finally have identified it and the budgeted expense is at a high, the most expensive that it might be is just under fifteen thousand for the east wall repair. There are two other walls in the Armory that will have to be done, but they don't have to be done this fiscal year, um so we will project that for the following year. Uh but the east wall is essential to get done this year, so we have to get it done in this warmer weather and that's where that comes in. And the last item on expenses that I wanted to highlight was um our collection expenses, which is, collection is a huge umbrella of really all the things that are museum-related. We're uh projecting to decline that expense due to lower costs for exhibitions that are planned for this year, and that's a thirty-nine percent decrease. So we've brought down the overall uh budget for the year a little bit. Um we're thinking that we're being very conservative, but we're also being optimistic that uh we're gonna get out of this COVID kind of um black cloud in this next fiscal year, which I think we're all probably looking forward to.
Yeah. Questions, comments for Ricky? Please make sure you get your tickets for that fundraising event. It's gonna be a, it's other than the mayor being there, I think it's gonna be a great night, so.
And you get goodies from the peanuts store, so what could be bad?
That's the big selling point right there.
Thank you all very much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ricky.
What day is that?
Ricky, what's the date again of the the fundraising event? I know I've got it on my calendar, but.
May twentieth.
May twenty.
And it's virtual.
All right, if you're wondering, we're in the home stretch, folks. You listen to Matt and then in the cleanup spot is Lynn McKinnon.
All right.
Now, Matt, Matt does a lot of stuff. That's why he he wants a lot of PowerPoint slides because then he shows all that he's responsible for, so.
He does have a lot of words, doesn't he?
He does, a lot of words.
So good evening, everyone.
Evening, Matt.
We are in the home stretch here. We'll get through the downtown group and then uh I think I'll just hit internal services real quick and then we'll move on to finance. Uh so the downtown group, obviously, everybody's very proud of it. There was something that actually occurred yesterday in Lynn's presentation that struck me a little bit. Uh so I think all of you know, the downtown group is Windmill Island Gardens, which is an enterprise fund, the DDA, the PSD, the farmer's market, snow melt, uh downtown parking, and then the Civic Center, which is on the other end, which is another enterprise fund. Uh what struck me in Lynn's presentation is if we take the two enterprise funds out, uh the general cost percentage of the general fund budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, from your pie chart, is point six percent of the general fund. is point six percent of the general fund. That shouldn't surprise me. I oversee these budgets. I see them every day. I know where the revenues and expenses come from. But I think that would surprise most of our citizens if they knew that that downtown Eighth Street corridor was a point-six percent general fund cost. So I just bring that up as an observation that I made, that it's very interesting, that really the things that are provided downtown are mainly paid by those downtown business owners and property owners uh in the form of assess assessments. And quite frankly, probably a fairly significant amount of that point-six percent cost is my salary uh for overseeing that. Uh so I bring that to your attention, and then we'll get into the uh the uh downtown group now. So the first one is the farmer's market. I think all of you know, we were able to open the farmer's market with restrictions. I hope all of you made it down there last year at least once. You saw the fencing. We had some help from VenueWorks. We were hopeful that this time, or the when it opens in May this year, those fences weren't going to have to be there. Uh but we've been working with the health department, and unfortunately, it sounds like we're going to have to have them again. The farmer's market continues to work very hard to raise uh awareness of programs like the Double Up Food Bucks. You've heard that from me before, uh that those programs are being utilized to have fresh uh have people come down that maybe don't have the means that a lot of us do, uh and to get fresh food from the farmer's market. And then obviously, the uh the efforts continue for like the Bridge Card Incentive, uh the kids produce programs, the things that get uh get mouths and the food of people that need it and healthy food. Unfortunately, this year, uh you know, we usually have a lot of special events. We have Velo City comes down and does the little kids' bike thing, and we have the chef series. Uh unfortunately, that is not going to happen again this year, uh at least at this conjuncture. But we look forward, though, to hopefully next year having that that place wide open, having little kids riding their little, you know, no pedal scooters around and having a great time at the market. But we will embrace it. We'll have a good year this year, uh and I think uh the farmers will appreciate us opening that back up. Uh the second one should be DDA. So uh I think some of you may already know, this last week, last week or the week before, uh on College Avenue, there were some large planters that's, oh, they were about yay-high. And they had some trees that were very root-ground, and then they were uh beginning to deteriorate and come apart. Uh for safety reasons, we took those out and uh filled them with dirt and mulch, and we're going to put some urns in there and make those look really nice. Uh those used to be the same thing over by Kilwens on the other side of the road, uh but those were taken out for si- for safety reasons. With that being said, we're going to begin soon the streetscape uh evaluation and incrementally uh implement the recommendations that are in there, tuck pointing, uh replacements of asphalt, and then future-proofing all the infrastructure that's in the ground. Most importantly, uh there is no intention on anyone's part to change the feel of downtown. I think we've got something that is so special to so many people that live here and visit here. Uh our intention is to do absolutely no harm to that, but make sure that it's in great shape so that people that visit our community continue to appreciate our community and the people that live here enjoy it uh just as much. PSD. So you had a a presentation not so long ago with Jen and Cara and Esther about DEI efforts in the downtown. Uh we do feel that that is a core effort uh for the survival of our downtown, is to make sure that everybody feels welcome. Uh they're doing a great job with that, and uh we're going to continue with that. We're going to evaluate when events can return. I think all of us want to get back to the time when, you know what? We've got a ice sculpting count uh competition downtown, or the street performers are going on. Uh but unfortunately, at least at this point, those aren't going to be happening this year. We're going to evaluate when those return. And then really, uh you've heard me say this before, but uh in adversity comes opportunity. And we uh efforts to work with the CVB, Tulip Time, um to promote downtown, those are really kind of sinking. Everybody's sinking together to make an effort to bring people here and bring people safely. Uh I think all of you know Girlfriend's Weekend happened. It was kind of a virtual but in-person event where there were no actual events for the ladies that came. Uh but that was a huge hit. There was a huge demand for it. Um it had had a wonderful impact on our downtown businesses, so good things happening there. Windmill Island Gardens. We're going to be back open for admission uh under the MDHHS and Ottawa County Health Department's guidelines, Saturday, April seventeenth. So just a few short days from now. Uh there's starting to be some color out at the island, so that's exciting. Uh there's people that are going out there to watch here. Check out the daffodils now, so the island's looking good. Um we're going to continue to evaluate what we can and can't do and how we do it, uh not only during the time when we're in the pandemic, but even coming out of it. And that's going to include milling and mill tours. Um we're looking at uh some partnerships with folks to get that windmill running even more often, whether it's milling or not. Uh people really enjoy to seeing the windmill turn, so we're looking forward to that. There'll be new wayfinding signage, an interpretive plan, and there's been a series of bridge, two bridges that have been added on the island. Most folks that go to the island, go to the island, kind of mill around the the post house and make their way out to the windmill, and then maybe the tulip field and come back. Uh but there's thirty-four acres out there. And really, the northern part and the eastern part, northeastern part of the island are underutilized. We don't get much foot traffic out there. There's a community garden there that I think most people don't realize are there. There's going to be a a sunflower field out there coming in the fall. Uh so those bridges really allow pedestrian access to get routed around the mill and the tulip fields and out to the frisian horses that have been moved further out with a uh relocation of the main tulip field. Uh so that's really some good things going on there. Again, this is another one that um continues to foster partnerships, ODC, CVB, Tulip Time. And one of the things that, we're going to talk about the Civic Center in a second, but the American Rescue Plan Act. You all heard of the significant federal funding that's coming to the city uh to kind of plug some of these budget holes that occurred overly at last year due to COVID. Uh it's not real clear uh to all of us in government exactly what the rules are going to be or how that's going to be administered. Uh but we're hopeful that uh the some of those funds can be used to to manage some of these budget holes. I don't know if you have anything to add, but. No?
Okay. Yeah, really, it's revenue replacement, and there's kind of, kind of some funky rules that yet are to be defined. Um the thing to remember with that is it's, like I had said before, it it it's intended that it gets us through the end of calendar year fourteen. And for us, the weird thing is, is that probably means that it covers three of our fiscal years, because it looks back for COVID and then it's looks forward that far. So when you take a look at Windmill Island Garden, Matt's going to talk about Civic Center here in a moment, but also maybe to some extent, our recreation programming. Those are the three main areas uh when we talk about kind of short-term plan for all of these, but the Civic Center. That that's a place, that that's a short-term plan where we identify, um that that's a very appropriate place for some some of that money. So we're, we have that in the back of our mind, but as we talked about in the setup, that's not part of the budget that that's before you.
Yes, thanks, Keith. Uh and the beautiful thing about that is we have a wonderfully new capable finance director to figure out all that out, and we just, she tells us what to do, so we like that. So the Civic Center. The Civic Center continues to operate at a deficit, and there's really two pieces to this. And one, um obviously, two, fourteen months ago, the Civic Center was in the position of two weeks to flatten the curve, and let's let's delay these events three weeks so they can happen, and here we are. So basically, no events uh for the past fourteen months, which is huge. That's a short-term budget issue, right? And we have to figure that out. The Civic Center Place Board needs to work through that, needs to understand what that's, what's that's about. So that's the first kind of piece of the puzzle. The second piece of the puzzle is where we are about halfway through our contract with VenueWorks. We've got approximately three more years left on that contract, and the Civic Center Place Board will have to evaluate the contract and the, really, the structure of how that place operates. So there's a short-term piece. COVID is a major issue in that. No events, obviously, in an event center is going to put us in a very, very bad position. So how do we deal with that moving forward into future budgets? Uh and then what do we do long-term? Uh so the building's going to reopen, right? I think when we came to you with with mid-year budget amendments, we were very hopeful that by this time, we would be back to some sense of normal. Shots in arms, people were going in the Civic Center, we're having, you know, events with weddings and all kinds of food and great things, and we're not there yet. So we need to continue, we work with VenueWorks and the Civic Center Place Board to encourage the use of that facility as it can safely be used uh for the widest spectrum of our citizens. You know, the Civic Center's been used for things that, quite frankly, I didn't think it would ever get used for, uh a vaccination clinic. You know, I think we're on our seventh or eighth vaccination clinic, so we've affected literally tens of thousands of our citizens and our neighbors' lives by getting vaccinated at the Civic Center. Quite honestly, I hope we never, ever, ever have to do that again, once this is over with, right? Uh we never, I hope I never go through another pandemic, and I hope I live for a long time. Public Safety's been using that building for trainings. You know, it's one of the the few places that they can get numbers of people in there for different types of public safety trainings. And then really working to begin to schedule new events to bring people into downtown. Use the building, use the facility. And uh just get people coming to Holland again. They're coming. You know, Tulip Time's coming. The weather's beautiful. Could be a little bit warmer. Flowers are coming up, trees are are blooming, pollen's everywhere, and people are starting to show up. I met a, three really nice ladies outside City Hall last night that pulled up in a car with Kansas plates and started taking pictures of tulips right before the meeting. So I was able to talk to them and kind of guide them through, well, okay, yep, the Tulip Boulevard's, and yep, go here, and yeah, go eat here. So people are coming. They're already beginning to come, and I'm hoping that with the weather forecast that we've got, not only at Windmill Island Gardens, will we have tulips for a long period of time, and we can spread some of these visitors out over that longer period of time, but also in the rest of downtown and throughout the city. Beautiful town. People want to come here. I think we've got some uh some brighter, much brighter days ahead, and hopefully the darkest days are behind us. I do have internal services. Do you have questions that you want to have on the downtown group before I move on to that?
Is there going to be signage at the Civic Center when events start coming back? So that, because it was always nice to see, you know, gun and knife show, and you go, oh, yeah, make a point.
Yeah, those, so we've.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim in Monroe.
You're a vendor, you're a vendor at the Gun and Knife Show, aren't you?
So that one kind of went off the rails real quick, but uh to answer your question, yes, there there's actually, the inclusion of a a kind of a marquee sign is actually in the VenueWorks contract. That's been to um the Civic Center Board a number of times. There's been several iterations of that. Obviously, over the last year, that's kind of been put on the back burner. So yes, that will be coming through, and it is in the contract that that it will happen.
It was, I I want to add a little bit to that. We were almost there to approving it, I believe, in February of last year. I think at the February Civic Center Place Board meeting, we were looking at like final designs for it. Um and then COVID happened, and that just kind of got put on the back burner. But there's, there there was definite movement on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, next, you got like seventeen more slides, right? I did count on one of them. You only had fifteen words on one of the slides, so that's really pretty impressive.
Well, I I I figure as long as I beat Mark on time, I'm safe.
You're good.
Okay. All right.
But then, I know, I know, Mr. Time.
Under promise, over deliver.
All right, uh internal service funds. So the two internal service funds that I'm responsible for, actually, there's three. There's a photocopy fund, but nobody cares about that. There's the two in, kind of internal service fund and CATV is a little bit different classifications, but it's really, it's the folks that are up in the nerdery every day doing the stuff that, you know, most people don't think about, right? So we have an extensive security camera system. I don't know how many folks understand that, but uh, you know, when I first came here, we didn't have any. And our security system, you really started with a bunch of IT guys that hook up POE cameras, and we've got two in here. We've got them all over City Hall. We've got them in parks. We've got them all over the place. Uh this budget includes money to consolidate them all in one, really, retention system and access system. Obviously, cameras like cameras in our jail or cameras that aren't meant for public consumption uh in the police department won't be on that system, or they'll be separately uh separated out in it, so the general public and even the IT staff won't be seeing those on a regular basis. So that's really a kind of a big deal to over overhaul that security system. To skip one and I'll come back to the second bullet item, but finalize the code over to BPW Fiber. You know, we are a BPW Fiber customer. Um we are in the process of doing that right now to cut over to uh ultra-high speed for all of our facilities. Uh we are centralized IT, um but we will actually house that main connection uh in the police station. The police station is tornado-rated and has our highest survivability, so we want to make sure that that main connection comes in at that location. And then really, the bottom one really is maintain high-quality IT infrastructure. If people in here and people up there never think about our IT infrastructure, it means it's always up and always runs, and you never think about it. But there are people, and I remember I used to do that, that wake up in the middle of the night sweating, thinking about how do we make sure this stuff is bulletproof, and how do we make sure our people can work all the time? And that group really, especially over the last fourteen months, when we've had people working from home, hey, we need laptops, get laptops. We need to figure out how to get, keep people moving from home. How is the VPN running for people? How do we make it better? How do we make people access easier? How can, can we get to the finance system all over the place? So they've really done a great job up there, making sure that our people are still working, can work from home, they're, they can be supported. And nobody really thinks about them, right? Only, you only think about an IT person when something goes bad. So they're doing a great job, and and we really want to make sure that 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 it's quality IT infrastructure. They're going to be busy. You heard a lot of the capital improvement stuff, body cams. Well, there's going to be a lot of IT support that's going to happen in that, and there's a lot of different things that are going to happen that that these folks are going to be involved in. And then I'm going to skip back up to number two, and that's two, we talked about this earlier, uh but to continue to show what's great about Holland. You know, our video crew is, pumps out videos, and we've been the mayor's message videos, right? The fireside chat videos, transition to Andy and me and others making fools of ourselves, uh right, on video. People love those. Our public safety department, Matt Messer's department, they have embraced that video crew and put out about a video a week now. And I hope you all are taking the time at some point to go and look at the comments that happen on those, right? Those comments aren't for the video crew. Those comments are for the police department, the police officers. We get to play a small part in that, and we're very proud of that, but just watch how much people love the videos of the police officers. The videos of your Parks and Recreation Director and your Assistant City Manager making goofy, you know, promotional videos to get people to come to Holland. So again, wonderful things are happening in that world. We're very proud of it. Uh we're going to continue that forward and keep innovating. And really, for folks like that, if making sure that they have the best equipment that we can get them to do their jobs is a small price to pay for what they're actually to be able to do for us. So we'll get off my high horse on that, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments for Matt?
So how long are your days working?
Days like uh yesterday and today, a little longer than I'd like, to be honest with you. But no, it it's, we've got great people, right? And some days are long, and, you know, I I will speak for the two of us is it doesn't really matter if you're here or not. You're still in, working in some form, and that's okay. You know, that's what we signed up for, and that's what we enjoy doing. You know, I've heard, a couple of people have mentioned, well, Matt does a lot of things. Well, yeah, but I get bored easy, too. So this is a good fit for for what we do and how we do it.
Thank you.
No, go.
Dave first, go ahead, Dave.
I'll be real quick. Much of the the cost is covered upstairs, like the video crew, and that sort of is covered by the CATV funds, right, that we get, or fees that are paid?
That, that's correct, and actually, there's a surplus of those fees that is actually a transfer out to the general fund and to the IT fund.
Right.
So they're separate um from an accounting standpoint, so actually, a portion of our equipment gets funded through that.
Yeah, okay. I re- I came across that as, I was reading through some line items, and I thought, jeez, I sure hope people keep buying cable TV instead of streaming all the time, just for that reason.
So it's, it's actually, so that's something that we worry about, right? And is top of mind, because that's how we fund that group.
Right.
And you can see it kind of ebb and flow a little bit. And really, what's happening now is that um, you know, cord cutters, and you've heard all of that. Well, the Comcast and AT&amp;Ts of the world are figuring out how to make sure that people still use their services. So those revenues are actually not falling. They're actually continuing to increase slightly over the past several years.
Well, they're doing a fantastic job, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
Keith mentioned something about the Moses study earlier, and I just want to say that with all the implementations that were presumed and studied for that. And I just want to say that with all the implementations that were presumed and studied for that, your position is probably one of the greatest assets we have. You're doing a heck of a job. You always did. You're doing a heck of a job. I hope you stay around for quite some time. Lot gets thrown on you. You take a lot of the jokes, but you also give them out.
You have a C-do.
You've got a great working relationship with your upper and with us. It's fantastic, Matt. You're a welcome breath of, a relief of breath, depth of breath. You're just great to be around.
Well, thank you, Mike. And, you know, I mentioned this to you last night, but I'm going to take an opportunity to maybe give you a little bit of a zing here now that, you know, in this room, the City Council Manager's Office room, you have been worn the hat of the elder statesman here, the one with the most experience as a servant of the citizens of the City of Holland. When, I believe, when you make your departure, that crown goes to me. And unfortunately, I think I'm a little less comfortable wearing the crown of the elder statesman than you may have been. But, you know, I've been here for twenty-three years now. I love this city. I love the people that work here. It's a great place to work. And once you've come that far, why change anything? So I plan on being here, well. Maybe I'll stick around after Hildy's. We'll see. Thank you.
Scott?
No, you know, City of Holland, just a wonderful place to live. It really is. I'm privileged to be here and live here. And part of it is people like you, Matt, and your colleagues and the staff. I totally agree with that. And a couple of the things you mentioned is continue to show what's great about Holland. I love that. I just love that line. And the other thing is spreading out the experience throughout the city. And you've done a great, great job, really, in the core part of the city, or you're starting to reach out in other parts. So I hope we continue to do that. The city has a lot of neat pockets to go visit, a lot of neat parks, a lot of places to do and things to do in the winter as well as the summer. So I hope we continue to do that and kind of have fun with those videos that you and others are doing. So I appreciate what you're doing there. So hopefully, we can continue to see that experience grow throughout the entire city. But thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Mega ditto's. I agree completely. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
I hope whatever outfit that Andy's going into, Quincy, there's one for him, too. And if you don't, we have way too much fun together, so. There's some tough days, but there's a lot of really good days, too, that iron them over, so. It is only appropriate that Lynn is going to take us home with Fiscal Services and really wrap up what I hope you found was a really thorough and a really solid budget. And Lynn is at the core of it. So Lynn?
Okay, well, it's always hard in finance to follow the fun group, you know. Not many people look at finance as the fun group, but I enjoy it. So we'll take a quick look at Fiscal Services and then a few closing comments. As you know, we transitioned Finance Director role this last year. Actually, Tim did check in yesterday, wishes everyone well. He took a look at the budget. So there's not a lot of change in the numbers. We're pretty consistent with the prior years as far as dollars go in our department. But I do have a few highlights I'd like to share, and I think some of these things are critical to the budget, maybe not necessarily in a monetary way. We would like to, we're going to focus on updating, adding, reviewing our financial policies. Financial policies are an important part because it gives us, again, another look at what the council's goals are because you set the policies, and then that impacts how we're going to carry out our business, and that will be reflected in future budgets. We already mentioned we're going to enhance the long-term planning process. We have a great process already started. We kind of want to bring them all together and add that revenue component for both operations so we can make sure we cover operating costs and capital cost and see what our future holds, and then start plugging in some of the impacts of these developments we've been talking about and seeing where these start to fall. So I'm excited about that. I really like planning process, so. And we've got a lot of great people to work with. Ryan Kilpatrick knows his area, Brian White and Mark, so it'll be a great project. So Banking Services, RFP, we just, our contract's up at the end of the year. And just best practices, we want to make sure we go out. It hasn't been bid since 2008. So we want to make sure we're getting the best products at the best value for the citizens. The fourth thing is implement a popular annual financial report. So the budget and brief that I sent out earlier, the goal was to present this large document in a smaller, concise, easy-to-read highlight so that we can engage people who don't want to sit down and read a three-hundred-page document. So we're going to do that for the audit report, too. Because it's important that we really communicate in a way that everybody can see what's going on in the city in a very transparent manner. So look for that. And then finally, we're just going to, in finance, we have a great, great group. They were very helpful in getting these documents put together, embraced some of the new ideas we brought. And so we're going to continue to partner with some of the entities we provide services for, and those are like the library, Macs, Smart Zone, the Energy Fund, and the airport. So other than that, I'm happy to be here, and I would be happy to answer any questions about the Fiscal Services area.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Lynn, I want to thank you for your effort here. The former financial person was quite an act to follow. He has his own peculiarities. But he was a great person, very knowledgeable, and your approach to this has been extraordinary. For a person like me who, you know, probably rates numbers like eating broccoli or something, it's, it is not my favorite thing, but it's just, that's the way I'm wired, right? But especially the idea of having these executive summaries or synopsis, you know, that's like getting a pony for Christmas, for me.
Good, thank you.
Seriously, because, you know, at least for me, it gives me the high points. It helps me understand the important, major elements. And from that point, you know, if there's something that piques my interest or I have questions about, I can go look throughout the hundred pages of stuff. But I'm probably not inclined to do that. But at least you've given me the important information that I need to do to do my job in an understandable and digestible way. So I just really want to thank you for that. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Anyone else?
A pony?
I haven't got one yet.
Hey, Matt, make note of that pony thing, okay? We can do something with that.
Any other comments, questions for Lynn? That's on the Financial Service. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Being on the Audit Committee, Lynn, I, Dave's going to replace me when I leave, so there's your new audit guy along with Quincy. I just want to say thank you also. You're the third financial director that I've had the pleasure of working with. Everyone gets better. Dave's right. Tim was a hard act to follow, but you've got nothing to be ashamed of and shy of. You've done a fantastic job. That executive summary of the executive summary, as he said, was excellent. The formatting here gets better every time we see it. Going from six hundred pages down to three hundred pages is a major accomplishment in all of itself. But the conciseness and the information that's there, as opposed to me with too many words or Keith with too many words, this is right to the point. And that's greatly appreciated, and I think our citizens are going to be able to take a look at this. They may not get into all the numbers, but there won't be any question about how, the integrity of how it was put together along with the award winners, award-winning that you get, that our department gets every year. And I expect that to continue to happen, so welcome aboard. You've made it through your first one. Thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate all the support, and even from Keith, you know, it takes, he had to be open to accepting some of those changes, too. So I appreciate it, and I'm happy that that was my intent, to make it easier for you to do your job and get those highlights that you really need, so I do appreciate it. So with that, now that we've seen two nights of lots of information, we kind of come full circle, right? Because we talked about when we started this process about we had a tough year, and it was going to be hard to balance. But what I'm going to talk about is the property tax. And this is, obviously, we need the property tax to support a large part of our general fund. We're having a tough year this year, but as you can see in this chart, here is our proposed millage rate, and it is exactly the same for the total rate that it was last year. We did reallocate, just to reflect that we have paid off some of our debt, which is also a good thing. But that blue line, it's the same. So we are, we did not have a lot of requests in this budget, as you saw from the departments. So we have held our, to our conservative budgeting, and we are proposing the rate that you see here, which is a total of thirteen point eight-six-nine-two. That includes the airport. And that would be what we suggest. And just one quick other chart, which is, okay, I'm going to sworn you, it's going to be hard to see. Yep, but, Cinca did this for me. But what's important is, let me just say what it says. So this, every year, we do this municipal tax rate comparison, and it's on page twenty-nine of your document. And this is a very telling chart, too, because what it says is that we're the sixteenth lowest out of fifty-five that we look at our neighboring municipalities for our tax rate comparison. And even of those, we're the sixteenth lowest. But when you look at a couple of them in front of, that are lower than us, they actually have income tax. So, I mean, that's a different type, you almost have to omit those. So again, kudos. It shows that we're really trying to work for the citizens within the, without just increasing taxes as an option. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we appreciate the, all the questions because it shows you're involved, and you know what's going on, and you're giving us great guidance on how we should do our jobs. So, but we would be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions for Lynn? I just want to echo what's been said. Thank you. Fantastic. I used to say Tim Vogli's the only finance person that ever explained things in a way that I could understand. You are now the second person who's been able to do that. It's not only short, you know, short and sweet, getting a pony for Christmas. It's not only concise, it's very clear and understandable, and thank you for that. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You going to turn it back to Mr. Van Beek one last time?
One last time. Not many words. Reminder. It's always a good check-in. I've done it in other communities. I want to do it here. So we downloaded a lot of information to you. If you've got anything that you're right now, like, hey, I'm going to have a problem with this, or, boy, change this, or let's open up this and talk about it. The earlier you let us know that, prior to having, you know, a public hearing and then looking to adopt that on May twelfth, twelve, the better. I haven't sensed any of that through the last two nights. But I'm going to prompt you now, and I'm going to prompt you maybe another time or two so that you kind of turn around and do that. I know Mike is kind of always reminded and carries that as good practice. So let us know, because then if we have to have another session to talk about anything, you know, having a surprise on May twelfth isn't a great thing. So let us know. Otherwise, we're just marching towards that. Basically, what you've seen is what we're going to be presenting to you on the twelfth, which would then be put out again for the public. We'd have the public hearing that night. And then it would be really to the point for asking for your approval for the budget.
To that point, there is a point in time where we publish our official millage rate, right, that we can go below, but we cannot increase. So does that happen at the May twelfth thing, or is that prior to that?
Yeah, you had a whole section, which is this whole truth in taxation thing, which is always confusing because it makes it sound like we're increasing the tax rate when we're really not technically, which is where Lynn leaving off on this last chart is the truth. It's the same rate, but sometimes citizens, and quite frankly, the process can be confusing, that because the same rate is generating more dollars, it makes it seem like, in some of the state law language that we have to use, that we're raising, we're raising taxes.
But I guess what I'm getting at, the official millage rate that we are charging, that thirteen-point, whatever.
Eight-six, right.
Right. That is what we give to the public. We essentially publish that as that's the rate that we're proposing.
We have done that prior to the public hearing.
Right.
In the past, and that's what he's, that's what he's asked.
It'll be published in the paper, yes.
And there was a legal stipulation, at least years ago, that once we did that, we could always lower that millage rate, but we could not raise it once we published it.
And we actually had to vote on it. It was brought up at a meeting prior to that to vote on the tax rate after the budget was done. We'd vote on that, and then again, we couldn't, we could go below, we just couldn't raise it from that point. So we adopted the tax rate, not necessarily adopting the budget as it was, just the tax rate that was there. So that, because we only have one meeting prior to that, that's probably going to have to take place next week. Yeah, next week.
We'll go back and look. I think some of the laws around all of that have changed also. So we'll make sure that whatever process that we have in place and that we need to put in place, we'll get before you.
Fair enough.
It's possible. It's changing. I'm talking old guy stuff here.
No, I remember, because we had the same thing at the county, and then there were some changes in that that were. But Will, thank you for the reminder. We'll make sure that we go through that.
Okay. Anything else? One last shot. Oh, let's do Raul, and then we'll do Mike.
All right. The, no, so same thing. I think ditto, ditto for the presentation. I mean, it did feel like these last two nights. I mean, I didn't have any questions because I didn't have any questions. I mean, it felt like it was pretty straightforward, almost too easy. But I think there's also some credit that goes to you, Keith, because I think in the, now the third budget cycle with you and the processes that you've implemented in your leadership, I think there have been less surprises, like, I mean, the content in here, there was no question as to where it was coming from. And we, I think you're, kind of the rule of no surprises has really set us up to where there are no surprises, and there aren't that many significant questions that we have to bring to the discussion. So it really goes to both of you. I think the format is excellent, and I think I blame your leadership for making this easy as well. So thank you.
Mr. Trethuie?
Raul read my mind. I'm not going to try to top that soon.
All right, anyone else? Great, then. Study session, we don't need to vote. We are adjourned. Thank you all.